Good morning. We're calling this meeting to order. This is Amador County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, March 26, 2024. Would you please join us to pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Wichita, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. The board met this morning in closed session. Items we met on were: Item one, conference with real property negotiators, direction was given. Item two, conference with labor negotiators, direction is given. Closed session minutes were approved, and vice chair Crew will report on item three.
Item three was director of staff?
Yeah, that was conference to county council. Direction of staff, okay.
We didn't hear that.
We didn't hear that.
We didn't hear that.
Oh, you didn't?
That's why I paused.
Yeah, we didn't hear that item yet.
Okay, I was out of the room, so.
Go back, we have to go back into.
Okay. My apologies.
All right.
Moving on, we have public matters not on the agenda. Is there any members of public that would like to address the board at this time? And there is a three-minute limit per topic, and if you would, please state your name to the record and sign in. Well, Bill, you're pretty faithful. I got to give you credit.
Casely, I might even agree with something you say. I'm not sure that.
Likewise.
I'm not sure that that'll happen, but. I want to talk about another Indian casino in Amador County. The NCIP, no casino in Plymouth, fought them to a draw. They're in Supreme Court waiting to be heard. So, the tribe decided just to move across over to county line, give the job to the board supervisors, which thrills me not at all. Your record is abysmal when it comes to dealing with the tribes. You usually lose. Can't, actually can't figure out any time you did win. The Jackson man of Milwaukee Indians, Margaret Dalton, came to you and said, "We're going to put it in a casino." You didn't require any kind of concessions. It was only because Margaret, and after she died, her sons said, "No, for the good of the community, we're going to continue to do things that would help the community." When you decided to, let me back up just a second, citizens of Amador County do not want any more casinos. Despite that, you acquiesced to a casino in, up in Buena Vista, and Harrah's is running that casino now. So now we have two casinos, and they're looking for a third. I am pretty well convinced that you guys are going to cave, and we're going to have a third. I think it'd be a great shame, but I think that's exactly what's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I will say, Bill, I think it's a little bit of a stacked deck when it comes to, I guess you'd call it negotiations, is the way it's set up. I don't think it's as much negotiating. I had to step out of the casino issue, but they hold a lot of trump cards, I'll say that.
Going to be in meet and confer, at least the four of you are, if not all of you. And the fact is, you could encourage citizens to show up and register their objections to that casino. You don't have to just go ahead and do your meet and confer and not have the input from any of the citizens who aren't going to like another casino. You can let them in if you will. Thank you.
I want to correct one thing, Bill. We did win one time, and then they went back and changed the rules, and then we lost the next time.
Which one was that, Richard?
It was Buena Vista, I believe.
Well, we won on appeal on an issue and went back. We lost. I would like a short opportunity. There's a lot of inaccuracies in what Mr. May said. If you want me to address any of them, I will, quickly.
I think that'd be fair.
So, first of all, the county has fought significantly for decades to oppose these casinos. We spent multi-millions of dollars in opposing casinos. In 2012, there was a decision by the federal government to take this Plymouth area land into trust. We sued them. We went all the way to the Supreme Court. We also lost. No Casino in Plymouth group has lost at every turn as well. We've opposed this casino. This casino, since 2012, has been sort of a done deal. We have a compact sets out parameters on how and what will happen and what our opportunity, we have a very limited opportunity to comment on the project. We can't stop the project, and that's what the board is doing. Every, and every issue that Mr. Cranford brought up has been looked into and has been discussed with the board.
So what are you going to do about it now that you've looked into it? Is he right? Is there a basis to continue to fight this?
No.
No?
No.
Well, that would be, that's really interesting to me, because frankly, Butch knows more about Indian law and Indian gaming than you do.
Yes.
Just about anybody else around here. And that's a fact. Thank you.
Any other members of public like to comment on any issue? No Zoomers? Okay. Last call. Board members, any items?
No.
Okay, moving on down. We have approval agenda. Second. We have a motion approved by Crew and a second by Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Also, the board met in closed session. We got that, never mind. We have approval of items on the consent agenda. We have one addendum, and that addendum is, it's administrative agency, approval of resolution of the county to donate remaining Rule 20A credits to underground overhead lines at McGee Park in Plymouth. They value these credits approximately ninety-two thousand some odd dollars, although they are no longer allowed to be sold, and they will expire in 2025. So it's something we can probably help Plymouth, and really, the county has no use for them. So we'll make that item seven M in the consent agenda, and also I'd like to pull for discussion item seven J. And I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead and discuss item seven J, and then we'll just approve them all. And seven J is, we're looking to purchase a loader and excavator for Public Works Department, which is, like, it's a great thing. They need some more equipment, some newer equipment there. Some of the equipment's pretty old, and one loader loader just came back with transmission that's upside down. It's done. The reason I asked to pull this is they have a loader bucket listed that they're looking to buy, and they believe the loader, we have a, on one of our old machines, we have a loader bucket that'll work. It's a four-in-one bucket. And so if it will work on that new equipment, we don't need to buy that bucket. But if it won't work, we may have to upgrade the bucket that we already told them they could purchase to a four-in-one bucket, which take an additional ten grand. Yeah, standard bucket now, and it may have to upgrade to a four-in-one. That'd probably be ten thousand additional. So I'd like to, if we could maybe add ten thousand on to the, oh, the quote, or what we were approving. If that's okay with the board?
They need a four-in-one bucket.
Oh, yeah.
So do we need to pull this and bring it back?
No, I think just give, just give an additional ten thousand dollars in the price we're approving.
With the authority to.
Yeah, authority too.
Up to ten thousand more.
Yeah. Probably won't need it, but this way here, if they need it, they have it. So I guess we'd probably approve that change, and then we'll approve the consent agenda. So I guess we have a motion to make that change in item seven J.
Some moved. Approve the consent agenda with the addendum added as seven M, and item seven J pulled for discussion.
You want to get seven J?
Okay, well, we'll go ahead. We have a motion to approve.
The rest of the consent. Go ahead.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll do a second.
Okay.
Looking for a second.
Second.
You have a motion by Axe and a second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimous. Take an item seven J then separate. We're looking to add additional ten thousand on to that. Look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
So the additional cost is ten thousand dollars?
Or you want to add ten thousand? Could be. We're giving authority to go an additional ten if need be, if the old bucket we have won't interchange with the new machine.
And we have budget for that? Okay. So how much would this cost totally?
I'm not sure.
It's three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. It's probably coming out of Public Works.
Three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars?
In the equipment replacement fund, yes.
Okay, so we have a fund dedicated for it?
Correct.
All right. Second.
We have a motion by Crew and a second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimous. Oh, moving on. Next up is five A. This is Risk Management presentation by the county's risk pool. Prism on the general liability and workers' compensation program data and discussion of other options.
So, good morning, members of the board and chairman. Sarah Duarte with Risk Management. I, this is in response to some questions you might have had from the previous board meeting with relation to those particular programs. I've invited Prism, our risk pool, here to discuss and present to you the program data. I have Gina Dean, Chief Executive Officer with Prism, and Kevin Bibler, Senior Vice President with Alliant, and they'll take over.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for taking the time to talk with us this morning about your workers' comp and liability coverages. I'm going to give you just a brief overview of Prism, in case you weren't familiar with us. Prism is a joint powers authority. We are governed by members of our board, of which you guys are one of them. We provide coverage and risk management services to most of the counties here in the state, as well as most of the cities and special districts as well. You all were founding members of our organization back in 1979. Let's see if this is going. Sorry, technical difficulty here. There we go. And we are not insurance. We manage risk-sharing pools, of which you are members of several of them. Specifically today, we're going to talk about workers' comp and liability, but you do participate in many others. There we go. When we collect premiums from you, it covers not only the claims that we anticipate in our pooled layers, but also the insurance that we have to buy to protect ourselves from catastrophic losses. Those are, the pooled premiums are calculated by actuaries based on our estimates of future claim costs, as well as the administrative costs, which are fairly low. We do invest our funds that we receive from the members and earn interest on those, and that helps reduce your costs going forward. The cost drivers are generally your exposure base. In workers' comp and liability, the basis is payroll, but other coverage programs have different exposure bases. We also take into consideration your claims experience compared to the other members of the program. And then, as I mentioned, we have to purchase some insurance to protect the pools from catastrophic loss. So we do have insurance premiums that we have to pay as well. As far as your participation, I mentioned you're a founding member back in 1979. You've been participating in the workers' comp and liability programs for many, many years. You participate in a lot of other coverage programs too, but specifically we'll focus on work comp and liability today. This slide just shows your recent history of premiums for workers' compensation. Our estimate for '24, '25 is a little over a million. We do hope that that is a conservative estimate, and when we finalize our budget, hopefully those numbers will come down. The premium for the current year is estimated to go up 12%, but a big reason for that is your payroll, which is estimated to go up eight percent based on the estimate that we received.
I can't quite see, is that, it looks like actual claims at the bottom?
That is actual claims at the bottom. The blue bars represent your actual claims. The orange bar represents the trended values, because the dollar today is more than when those claims occurred. You'll see that back in the 1718 year was one of the biggest years for claims, but that wasn't the year you had your largest claim. That was actually back in the 809 year. And if we trended that claim to today's dollars, it would have cost almost eight hundred and fifty.
Can I move that, is there any way to move that up a little bit, Jennifer?
I moved it up.
Let's see, go back to that one. There we go.
Maybe not.
I think it's the projector.
So it's, so you said that's, there's the actual claim, then there's the actual value of the dollar today?
The blue bars represent your actual claim costs for those fiscal years. The orange bars represent the trended values of those claims, what they would have cost in today's dollars.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's, it's just all relative, because back then, your costs through the insurance were less, and, you know, the claims are less. So now insurance is more, and claims would be more, so I mean.
Right.
Does that include the ongoing, because some workers' comp claims are open-ended?
That's, that's true. We bucket them into the fiscal year that they occurred. So we may still be paying on a claim in the '14, '15 year, but we put it into the '14, '15 year, the year it occurred.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And you said your admin costs are quite low. Do you have a number on?
They're, they're, they're under three percent. I don't know the exact percentage, but it's under three percent.
Thank you. I'd be tooting that horn if I were you.
Okay. Your premiums are calculated based on your exposure, your payroll, but they're also adjusted for your experience. And then we compare your experience to the other participants in the program. And we do that with an experience modifier, similar to what insurance would do. We do it a little differently. Your experience is better than average. If your percentage is lower than 100%, that's reflective of good experience compared to the other members. If it was above 100%, it would be worse experience than the other members. So you can see by the percentages here, you're in the high 80s, low 90s. So you are receiving premium credit for that good experience. In the '24, '25 year, you'll receive a credit of forty-one thousand, four thirty-two for that good experience. And then you also receive a credit for not having any large losses, and that's another seventy-two hundred dollar credit. So your good experience does pay off. If you had higher experience than other members, you would have a surcharge instead of a credit.
But it is a pool, so if the pool's not doing well, we're going to feel that pain.
That is true. The pool development does impact our rates from year to year. The rate increases, I don't know the exact percentage, but they were fairly moderate for workers' comp this year. Liability is not quite the same story, although you do have good experience compared to the other members. This does show your premium history, and clearly, the premiums have been going up significantly. Your claims dollars are relatively low, except the 1920 and 21 years, your claims costs were higher than the other years. And that probably is indicative of what future expenses will be. The 21, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24 years are still developing. So we're still analyzing those. More information on those claims are coming in, but it's likely that they're going to be up in that same range as those other two years. The largest claim in your history was back in '06, '07, a little more than four million dollars. And if we trended that to today's dollars, it would likely be over fifteen million dollar. So that's the kind of claim that we're buying insurance for. We pool our losses, but we buy insurance for those catastrophic claims, because they do happen, even in Northern California, rural counties. They do happen.
That is, that is a pretty big claim. But if you look at the claims you've had, they're really pretty low overall.
Yeah.
And you figure value of dollars, I mean, there's, you know, you take dollars from the county over the years, and you invest them, and you figure the value of that money.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's so, that fifteen million is not an extraordinary number figuring that. I mean, it would be a lot of money in today's, today's dollars, but the money we paid back then, it also appreciate.
Right. Your experience in liability is, is very good as well, better than the average member, and you're getting a pretty good credit for that, almost seventy thousand dollars in the current estimates. This year, the board decided not to pass on credits for not having any large losses. When the board did that a few weeks ago, I don't think we fully realized the impact it was going to have on some of the members, Amador County being one of them. And so we're actually asking the committees that do that analysis, and ultimately the board, to reconsider that action. It would have been about two hundred thousand dollars in additional credit for your county. So more to come on that. Our board doesn't meet again until early June, so we won't have resolution, but we are going to ask them to revisit that. Like I mentioned, we do have to buy insurance from the marketplace too, and so we are subject to their environment and the cost drivers there. So Kevin's going to speak to that.
Thanks, Gina. Good morning. Thank you for the time this morning. So Gina mentioned that we do have to buy insurance for the catastrophic losses, and that's where I come in. Alliant Insurance is the broker for the pool and for the county members. So we buy insurance above the five million dollar pool. So every claim that goes above five million goes into the insured layers. We use nine different carriers currently to build up to a twenty-five million dollar limit. That in and of itself. That in and of itself is a symptom of where the market has gone. 10 years ago, we could have used one, maybe two carriers, to get up to $25 million. But because the loss experience overall, not just with PRISM, has gone so dramatically up, they no longer are willing to provide that much limit for any single carrier. So we're forced to use multiple carriers, causes frictional costs to go up. That's part of the issue.
What's your, what's your cost to acquire that?
Well, it's, it runs to the tune of millions of dollars for the overall program. So the big part of the premium that you pay goes to fund that pool, but a significant part of the premium that you pay also goes to, to pay for the insurance premiums.
Yeah, what's the cost to get the, the $5 million to $25 million coverage?
For the entire program, the GL1 program, it's tens of millions of dollars.
Because you're covering a whole bunch of entities, yeah?
Yes, yeah. So something happened. Prior to 2013, 14, claims experience was moderate and it was stable. And then in 13, 14, and on, the cost of claims went dramatically up. Again, not with the county, not just with PRISM, but across the board. It started in California, sort of a California phenomenon, and it has spread since across the country. It is those claims, we call it a frequency of severity. There are more big claims, and the big claims are just simply bigger. And that's what's been driving the hard market that we've all, you know, been hit by. It affects PRISM, it affects the members. We also contribute to it. We have our share of large losses. The graph at the bottom is just intended to show the upward trend. Over the last 10 years, across the board, the market has seen an 11% annual increase in claims costs for the last decade.
You know, I think part of it may be, I tell people that politics do matter.
Oh, yes.
And we become a very, lack of a better term, I might offend some people, but maybe, I don't care. We become very liberal, we elect some very liberal judges, and they begin to get some very liberal, I guess, rulings on what to pay people for damages. Not saying people shouldn't be paid for damages, but if you get excesses, we're going to feel the pain. And so who we put in place, who appoints judges, has, in the long term, has ramifications. And I think that's part of what you're seeing.
Mr. Chairman, you may have seen my presentation because we're going to talk a little bit more about that, but I absolutely agree.
Oh, well, there, there it is, maybe, okay.
So the phenomenon leads to what we call nuclear verdicts. And technically, a nuclear verdict is anything over $10 million. But it doesn't stop there. It goes to 20, 30, $100 million verdicts. And it are those massive verdicts that are causing the disruption in the economics of providing the insurance. If you're faced with the potential of a 10, 20, 30 million verdict, you're more likely to settle, and you're more likely to settle for a higher dollar value so you don't risk getting those type of large verdicts. This graph down here just shows the number of $20 million verdicts across the country by year. And you can see prior to COVID, it was in the 80, 90, $100 million range, pretty stable. Everything shut down during the couple of years of COVID, and it fell off, as you would imagine, but it's back, you can see 140, $20 million plus verdicts in 2022 and over 210 in 2023. So why is this happening? Sort of the buzzword is social inflation. Technically, social inflation is any time the cost of claims increases by more than normal inflation. And there's a lot of the factors that, sir, you were just talking about that really contribute to this. Our, our society has an increased propensity to sue. We're much more litigious than we were in prior years. The size of the awards, like I mentioned before, is really driving a lot of this. Courts and even the juries are much more favorable to the plaintiffs as compared to us, the defendants. There is definitely, we're seeing a growing distrust of corporations and governments alike. The deep pockets are definitely being hit. We're going to talk about some of these. Litigation financing is a big issue. We have a separate slide about that. And then the plaintiff bar is just much more connected and much more aggressive than on the defense side. This slide showing down here is the difference between what we thought projected payout should have been and the impact of social inflation. This is just auto liability, but it shows that a $20 billion annual increase just because of these social inflation factors. So it's definitely making a significant impact. So litigation funding is where a third party invests money in the outcome of a case. So these are people that are not involved in the case. They are investors. They put the money into the case, allows the plaintiff's attorney to hire better experts, allows them to keep the claim going, whereas otherwise, they might have to settle. Sometimes it's just paying the bills for the plaintiff so that they don't have to give up on the case. The trick is, the plaintiff only pays the investor back if they win. They pay back what they invested plus some percentage of the award. If they don't win, they don't pay it back. So the plaintiff has no incentive not to take part in this type of a situation. The problem is, it's not regulated and it's not disclosed. So nobody on the jury knows that this is happening. And it's becoming used much, much more often now than it was even five years ago. This, at the bottom, shows a survey of law firms across the country, and they're saying that they are 69% more likely to use litigation financing today than they were just five years ago. So it's a big problem, and it's really contributing to some of these big awards that we've been seeing. And then there's the plaintiff bar. We all see these advertisements, billboards, on the radio, on cable TV. They are very good at attracting cases and, and pushing for high dollar, $3.4 billion spent annually in the U.S. on these type of advertisements. And then lastly, our jurisdiction doesn't help us out. This is the results of a study that's done annually. They call it, excuse my French, the judicial hellholes, and they're trying to identify the worst places to try cases. Unfortunately, over the last six or seven years, California's been one, two, or three every time. It really impacts our outcomes. And so that's what's causing a lot of this, the cost going up. Even having gone through all of that, a member of PRISM is much better off in PRISM than they would be on their own. You have a lot more clout in the market, a lot more buying power, a lot more efficiencies as a group. But there's also a lot of things that PRISM's doing to try and cut those costs and mitigate the increases. And I'll turn it back over to Gina to talk about some of those.
All right. From an underwriting standpoint, we reevaluate the structure of our programs, the coverages that we're buying every single year. We're trying to find the most efficient, cost-effective mechanism for the members, you included. On the claim side, we are assisting the members in settling where it makes sense, but also taking cases to trial where it makes sense. If you have a defensible claim, we want you to take those cases to trial and fight these. It doesn't help us if we keep just settling and settling for more. We have a lot of data. We have a data and analytics team at PRISM. We have a data scientist, all to help us find where we have opportunities to do things better and make the costs lower for your entities. And then we have a lot of services that we can offer to help supplement what you're doing here at the county. A lot of those services are included within the cost of the premiums that you're already paying. So they're all available to you, and, and we work with your risk manager and other departments to get those implemented to ultimately reduce your cost of claims going forward. We have a legislative team. We have a legislative committee that works to try and prevent further, further laws that will impact your costs going up. In addition, we have long-term carrier relationships. So the, the limits that we're able to buy from those nine carriers, we've been doing business with many of them for a long time. And so we are able to renew our coverages better than other pools or buyers that don't have long-term relationships. We're able to purchase better coverage without as many restrictions as entities could do on their own. So having those long-term relationships really does pay off. And then lastly, we formed a captive insurance company back in 2016. What this gives us the ability to do is invest a little differently because insurance payout patterns are much different than a public entity, a city or a county. And so we're able to invest longer and we're able to invest a little differently. It's still very conservative, but we are able to achieve more in investment income, and ultimately, that reduces your costs. We have provided over $80 million in upfront savings to the members since 2016 because we can earn more interest through our captive insurance company. The graphic here at the bottom just shows the difference between the interest earnings for the pool for PRISM, as well as for our captive ARC. And on a consolidated basis, we've been able to earn 4.3% compared to just 4.08 if we were investing just within PRISM. So it does benefit you all. There's things that the county can do as well to help reduce your costs, and Kevin's going to speak to those.
Just real quickly, on the last couple of slides, not only are those things important because they do help mitigate claims costs, but they're also really important when I'm trying to keep insurers participating because we present that to them. You are a founding member and, and current member of what they consider to be the premier JPA, not only in California, but in the country. And it's a lot of those services, a lot of those things that PRISM has built over time that helps us to maintain those relationships and keep, frankly, keep the carriers participating. Here, what can, what can the county do? I mean, there's been a lot of doom and gloom here, but take advantage of the risk, loss control and risk prevention programs. Some of them are included in your premium. Others are at reduced rates. There's a lot of good things in there that should be taken advantage of. Obviously, stay current on, on housekeeping, maintenance, inspections, things that can cause losses if you let them go. You can consider more risk. Right now, your primary first dollar coverage on the workers' comp, and you pay a $10,000 deductible on the liability. You could consider self-insuring up to a certain level in one or both of those programs. It doesn't mean that you eliminate the premium and, and it's a net 100% savings because you still have to fund for the claims in those layers, and you have to manage the claims. But that could be a potential savings that could be considered. We can help you analyze that.
Yeah, that's something, you know, I'd kind of asked about our CAO, you know, what about looking at maybe just self-insurance?
Yeah.
Because the county, like, is probably a little bit more conservative county, a little bit more careful, even, even with, like, her employees, and probably just, probably have less exposure than some other areas might have. And then with the cost going up and up and up, at some point, it's like, hey, this thing might pencil out.
Yeah.
But there's always the, the case where you get, you know, that, the massive, the massive payout. So that's always a specter you got to watch out for.
Yeah, I certainly would not encourage self-funding entirely, but you could certainly do some analysis to look at taking on a self-insure retention $100,000 to something like that. And we would want to get your actuary involved to determine how much you would have to fund that layer and see how that compares to the premium savings. And again, PRISM staff, and we can help you with that analysis.
Wouldn't hurt to look at that.
Pardon?
Sure wouldn't hurt to look at that.
Yeah, yeah. As Gina mentioned, defend the claims that are defensible. You know, that's the best tool that we have to keep the plaintiff's bar at bay. Ensure you can provide high-quality data. That's the name of the game nowadays, is data and predictive analytics and everything that goes along with that. So maintaining that good data is important. Support legislative change. You know, that's the way out of the woods, as unlikely as it probably is, or at least it appears to be. But anything we can do legislatively would be helpful. You could consider purchasing additional limits. I mean, we have one rural Northern California county that had a claim just recently that came right up to the $25 million mark. So that is no longer just something that's way out there. It's potentially possible even today. And then the last one is really important. Help to educate the public that the cost of these big verdicts aren't just pushed off to the insurance company and it doesn't really mean anything to us. It absolutely does. Whether part of it's being paid by insurance upfront or not, the cost of that is coming back to the county, to the members, and ultimately, to the taxpayers. So we, we always shudder when there's a big claim and immediately, there's somebody from the defense, on the television saying, oh, this is okay. It's covered by an insurance. Well, we're all paying the cost of that. So that's something that can be helpful as well. So I'll get off my soapbox, and I think that's all we have, but we're happy to address any questions that you might have.
I want to point back just to one slide real quick, that judicial hellhole study that Kevin referred to. They actually broke it down to a cost per taxpayer. And their estimate was that each taxpayer in California is paying $2,100, $2,120 per year as a result of these large verdicts. That's a huge amount and something that we need to better educate the public on the actual cost to them as taxpayers in this state. Was a lot of doom and gloom. This isn't the first time that public entities have faced this kind of an insurance market. Back in 1979, when CSAC excess insurance authority, that was our former name, when we were formed, it was exactly in this kind of a market. It was impacting workers' comp the most at that point, and that's why we started workers' comp. But liability was shortly followed that, where we just couldn't get reasonably priced insurance. And that's kind of where we're at now. So we're doing the best we can with our pools, but the costs do keep going up.
It's a little bit cultural too, I think, because years ago, people wouldn't file a claim unless they really had a problem. Now, it is like, you know, I can put on a money collar, and I can limp, and I can get 50 grand. And it's, it's a little bit of a problem.
Yeah.
How many rural supervisors are on the board of PRISM?
Every county that's a member has a representative on the board. It may or may not be somebody on the Board of Supervisors. It may be the risk manager or the CAO. But 55 of the counties in the state have a seat on our board.
And they still took the action to not give the, the credits to, back to counties?
They did, however, in all fairness, I don't think we realized the impact. Originally, we were, staff was recommending that the credit be given to the members, and it was on-the-fly decision that was made to keep the money for the overall health of the general liability program without recognizing the impact it was going to have to the members. We realized that after the fact. So now, we can go back to the board and ask them to reconsider that decision. So that's something that, that we intend to do based on the feedback we receive from your county, as well as some of the other members that were negatively impacted.
I think part of the problem too is agreeing to settle in too many cases. And I understand, you're, you're trying to avoid that catastrophic payout that would affect everyone, but, you know, a lot of times, you give direction, if it's involving staff, you, you give clear direction, and staff could not heed that direction, and then they get terminated, and then they come back and sue. Well, and a lot of times, they're well-employed, but they still prevail under a jury. So that's really troubling to see that happen. I had a former judge tell me that, and this was 10 years ago, that jury pools are changing now. that jury pools are changing now. In cases that you would routinely see go away, they're going to 50/50 that they're going to prevail.
Or as frustrated as you.
Yeah, when you talk about the tort tax, is that across the board? You know, is that all lawsuits, you know, like PG&E?
I believe it was all lawsuits.
All lawsuits of California.
Yeah, and I don't recall what time period they used for making that assessment. But the point is there is a cost to the taxpayers.
Correct. No, I understand that. I was just kind of curious what the parameters of that, of that is. Thank you.
Under the things that we can do, you said we should vigorously defend the claims that are defensible. Well, I've only been doing this seven years and every workers' comp claim that comes by, you guys tell us to settle. And everybody's scared of liability, so they cave.
You have to have the right set of facts. You have to be, you have to know where you're trying the case. You have to know who the plaintiff's attorney is and their track record. And, you know, sometimes it does make sense to settle, but there are the right times to take a case to trial. And when it's that time, we should do it. We have seen just since last renewal, several defense, you know, claims, which were many multimillions of dollars was the demand, and they were successfully defended. So it does and can happen, but you got to pick and choose the right opportunity.
And who determines that? You?
No, it's, it's the county or your claims administrator. It does get discussed and vetted with Prism's claim staff and even the reinsurers' claim staff, but ultimately it's the county's call.
Also, we get to blame Sarah.
And when it comes to
I've been doing that anyway.
When those settlement proposals come to Prism, it's a group of members. It's a committee of 11 members that make those decisions, not the Prism staff.
And do you have, Jennifer, do you have a copy of their slideshow? Okay.
Very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
It was real interesting, actually. Thank you. Is there any members of public like to comment on this item? Seeing none? No zoomers? Nope. Moving down to item 5B. This is Office Emergency Services, discussion of possible action relative to the adoption of the Amador County Emergency Operations Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Matt Curtin for the Amador County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services, requesting the board approve the submitted emergency operations plan. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have about it. Sure. Do you want me to?
Yeah. Too good at genetics is the problem there.
As I've, as I've reviewed all this, as even going down to war proclamations, that was kind of an interesting, in this time and age of, of all the different aspects that you had to cover on this thing. It's a very good.
It is a very lengthy document.
Lengthy document. There you go.
I think probably a little too lengthy, quite honestly. I pity whoever's got to try to find, dig everything out of that. I know, I know you got to schedule, you know, whatever it is, but it's 1,200 pages, I think, something like that.
A little over 1,000 pages.
Yeah.
I have to admit, I didn't read the whole thing, but do you like follow a template or, you know, what other counties have done just to make sure you've included all the appropriate elements?
Our office hired a consultant to write the plan for us. And there is a laundry list of items that they have to include. In fact, that list is called a crosswalk, which our consultant fills out as well. And it gets submitted after the board hopefully approves it for final approval with the state. And that crosswalk gets submitted to make sure that all of the state and federal regulatory and statutory requirements are listed in it.
So a lot of it is CYA. If you don't have it in the document, you might get in trouble.
There is numerous advantages to having the emergency operations plan in place. One of the biggest ones is it goes again back to the statutory and regulatory requirements, which allow us to be in compliance with SIMs and NIMS, state and national emergency management programs. And those plans, being in compliance with all of those things allows the county to apply for different grants. So even though there is a cost associated with writing the plan, it benefits us for years on end of making sure that we're able to apply for grants down the line.
So what are the specific elements that are, well, unique to Amador County that we put in that other counties might not be or is not on the crosswalk list?
I don't know that the emergency operations plan covers the specific hazards. That would be a different plan that we're actually going to be tackling next. That's the local hazard mitigation plan. The emergency operations plan enables organizations to be prepared for a wide range of catastrophes and emergencies. It provides a structured framework for coordinating emergency response efforts. It outlines clear responsibilities for key personnel. It establishes communication protocols. An EOP focuses on safeguarding human lives by providing guidance and evacuation procedures, sheltering, medical care, and other protective measures. By having an emergency operations plan, and organizations can mitigate these potential losses associated with emergencies. And an emergency operations plan establishes communication channels, protocols, and mechanisms to ensure timely and accurate information sharing. This helps to avoid confusion, prevent misinformation, and maintain public trust and confidence.
Yeah. No, I understand the need for the plan. I got no problem with that. I'm just saying, I think it's too long, quite honestly. I mean, it makes your job, I think. It's supposed to make it easier. Ultimately, it's probably harder, but you got to have it. I get that. It's just, maybe I'm too old to remember how things used to be. Things are a little more logical and you got, you got to home base a hell of a lot quicker. Nothing against, nothing against you or your sheriff's department. It's just, they're making things very cumbersome. But that's the rules you got to play by. I get it.
I don't disagree with you, but again, we're bound by the state and federal rules and requirements.
I understand that.
So in the past, when there were fires like the Butte Fire, Pine Grove had to evacuate. One of the problems that occurred was everybody got on the roads and it just all was kind of clogged or jammed up. Is there any provision to try to alleviate that in the future?
We have a separate document that I keep in my office of, of a master evacuation route, which addresses those issues, sir.
Okay.
But are we training anybody to deal with that? I mean, I, I know the sheriff's department knows everything about it. You know, I've talked to a lot of my constituents, being a high country supervisor. And I'm telling people to have multiple accesses to get out. You know, the fire is east of me. I'm, I'm actually going to Calaveras. You know, I know not to go down to Jackson or anything else because I was here during other fires. But are we, are we telling people to kind of come up with their own evacuation plan?
It's something we can look at into the future, possibly publishing the evacuation plans onto the county website.
Yeah, because it's just, it's one of those things that, you know, if the fire is west of me, I'm going to Kirkwood. Thank you. I'm out of here. And that's, you know, and that's kind of the, I'm hoping for someday down the road, we'll do a little bit better at the training in that aspect.
Sure.
Thank you.
You know, plans aren't bad, but I think ultimately you always got to tell people, hey, look, look, look at the plan or whatever may be out there. But you got to be paying attention to what's actually going on because like up there in paradise, they had plans in paradise. They're going to, they had zones and they're going to evacuate. And then Mother Nature stepped in and says, you got all your plans and I'm going to hit you with this. And just ran them over.
Right.
And so they, they had plans up there. I think it was zone one, two, three, four, five, and how they would do it. And the fire just burnt through town in just a short time, which they had some very unusual topographical and weather items up there. We got the topographical, maybe not quite the weather, but something, those things hit, for lack of a better term, you're almost on your own. And people need to understand that because, you know, who, who's going to save me? Well, there's nobody there to save you. Sometimes you've got to save yourself.
Right. And, and we, we encourage that, that people be self-reliant as well.
Yeah, we're to try to help do all we can, but sometimes if an, if an actual catastrophic thing just comes out, you know, out of nowhere and, you know, okay, I'm being real hypothetical. But Butte Mountain blows up, there's no plan for that. It's an ancient dormant volcano. At that point, government will do all it can do, but you're on your own for a certain degree. And that's something people need to understand. Just, it's, it'll help. Anyway, um, any more board questions?
Nope.
Members of public? Oh, Mr. Gertan? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Looking for?
Move to adopt the Amador County Emergency Operation Plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Forrester, second by Crew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carry is unanimous. Moving down to item 5C is Amador Senior Center. Presentation by Mr. Chris Colton, Executive Director. Chris?
Hello, good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
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 Thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on what we've been accomplishing and what we've done. Just as a sort of historical reminder, the pandemic happened in 2020 and ran through 2022 and disproportionately affected seniors in that they huddled in their homes and remained somewhat socially isolated. According to the National Institute of Health, 50% of older adults are at risk of social isolation. And up to one-third will experience social isolation at some point in their lives. And this is where Meals on Wheels was born in 2020 as the senior center's response to not only the pandemic, but to these statistics as well in combating social isolation amongst older adults and the nutritional challenges they face as they age. So I wanted to give you a little overview of 2023, the calendar year and what we accomplished. We had 248 clients on our distribution list for our Meals on Wheels program. The average client donated $1.47 toward each meal in that calendar year. And a little over a third did not contribute at all to the program in any way, shape, or form. We do not, do not deny services to any older adult for their inability to contribute to the program because of the economic situations that older adults face and their limited income and some of the living situations and challenges that many older adults face, particularly in a rural community. To give you some contrast as to what we accomplished in the last calendar year, in 2022, we were able to serve 28,781 meals. And amazingly enough, our staff sort of set a goal for that year to hit 30,000. And we, we were really disappointed that we couldn't hit that. But we blew our socks off the following year because we hit 36,135 meals in the calendar year, which is pretty impressive considering the program's only a little over four years old and that it started during the pandemic. Again, just as a reminder to the board and those who are listening to this meeting, our delivery program includes a hot delivered meal every single day, five days a week, seven meals per week, with weekend meals being delivered on Fridays. So we deliver actually three meals on Friday. So of the 36,135 meals, the county support of $30,000 per fiscal year comes out to about 83 cents per meal. And I give you that sort of statistic not to diminish what the county does in supporting meals, but just to show you how much we depend on it, that we spend 83 cents of the county money to keep our meal program going for each meal. As a reminder to the board, any infrastructure, because I'm going to give a little report on that here in a minute, any infrastructure that we put into place, and we've been doing that for the last couple of years to build out capacity, all of that infrastructure is paid for by outside grants. None of the money that the county has committed to our program goes to infrastructure. It all goes toward directly providing those meals for those older adults. In 2023, we had 958.93 volunteer hours. And that came to an amount based on a $15, I think it was $15, maybe 1550. I, I don't remember the math exactly, but a minimum wage. And those volunteer hours equated to about $14,800 in actual value to the senior center, which is really important for our program. Keep in mind that our volunteer program is not just beneficial to the program itself in keeping costs lower, but volunteer hours are really important because these are older adults volunteering their time, which helps to combat social isolation. It connects senior with senior and it allows them to have that social interaction. And any, every one of our volunteers is always aesthetically proclaiming that the program contributes more to their well-being than they feel like they're actually contributing to the program, which says a lot about what they're doing. So briefly, how have we increased capacity? We purchased an additional Subaru, again, purchased with grant dollars through the Area 12 Agency on Aging and the infrastructure grant that had been provided to providers like us. And this Subaru has now been put on the road the moment it was purchased to help get hot meals delivered. And then this is a, a component of our infrastructure plan that I'm really excited about, and that is that we now are going to be automating our packaging process. Currently, it's all done manually, in which the meal is placed in a three-comp tray and then hand sealed every single one of those. So all 36,000 meals every year being hand sealed one at a time. And if the next slide would come up, you can see we're going to be moving to a conveyor system in which each meal is set into a template on that conveyor. It's taken underneath a sealer, automatically sealed and stamped with cellophane, comes out the back end, and the driver is loaded into hot boxes immediately. This is going to greatly increase our capacity. It's going to increase our efficiency. It's going to lower our labor costs. And it's going to allow us to put more money and more resources into better meal delivery. So we're really excited about this. It's going to be about five times faster than our current method. And again, all purchased and secured with outside grant money to make these things possible. So we're really excited about that. Do you have any questions for me about the program?
I just have a comment. I had the opportunity a while, a while back. Older lady I know said she wasn't hungry and didn't want to eat that. And you want it? I thought, you know, I think I'll try it. It was actually pretty good.
I'm surprised that you're surprised.
No, I mean, I wasn't surprised, but I mean, it was, it was surprisingly good.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you enjoyed the meal.
Oh, Rib Day is the best.
Rib Day's a popular day. Good luck finding parking at the center.
Yep.
We have to give up our staff spots to people parking.
This is one of your, the packaged meals. It was, so I think whoever, the food you're having produced was really, it was, it was good stuff. So.
Good. I'm glad you were able to try it. And of course, all of you are invited to come and try out the meals. I know Supervisor Brown has come down and enjoyed a meal with us, and we'd invite all the rest of you to, to enjoy it as well, take the time. We would love to provide it. And you all qualify, which is wonderful. You're just, it's so great. All qualify for the meal program.
You should have waited for after the vote.
No, I say it only because you don't have to contribute. You don't even have to pay for the meal. You can just come down and enjoy it.
Young man, I don't qualify. I just look old.
That's what I meant. You're treading in some deep water.
It's not the years, it's the miles.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board? Any zoomers? No zoomers? But I'm Chris. I appreciate your presentation and.
Is this what, what you asked for last year or does this represent an increase?
The letter that I sent to Mr. Eylee is the exact same amount that you have contributed to every year.
Okay.
And I'm requesting the same for fiscal year 2425.
Great.
And that has been put into the budget, so.
Okay.
It's just a presentation today.
Yeah, we'll approve it at the budget.
We'll prove it at the, at
Okay.
The budget process, but it's included.
Okay.
And again, thank you for your continued support, for building into the budget, Riley, and for board. Thank you for your support. You've really made a big difference in this county. And I thank you for your partnership in doing so.
Yeah, great.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
And everybody else here.
Okay, next up, oh, one we've all been waiting for, one of the two we've been waiting for. This item 5D, discussion of possible action relative to the request for allocation of funds for fiscal year 2024, 2025. It's the Amador County Chamber of Commerce and the Amador Council of Tourism. So who's coming up? We've got Tracy and Matt, looks like. And Kathleen.
Kathleen and Brad.
And Brad.
Brad's birthday today. Happy birthday, Brad.
Just when he wanted, just where he wanted to spend his birthday.
Maybe you can get a free lunch over.
I'm going to the senior center.
Yeah.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for having us on the agenda today. You are seeing in front of you today the Amador Business and Visitors Alliance. Consists of Matt Toma from the Amador Chamber of Commerce, Brad Barnard from the Amador Chamber of Commerce, Kathleen Mahan from Visit Amador, and Megan Van Hook from the Amador Visitors, or the Amador Ventners Association. She's trying to get here, so she may make it before we're finished today. So I want to just tell you a little bit about what we're doing, and I, and I have told you a tidbit about what we're doing, so we'll just kind of elaborate. And this is a, a group show today. So I'll tell you a little bit about memorandum of understanding that we knew had existed and that there had been discussions. So at some point in 2012, the Amador Business Council brought together the Amador Economic Development Partnership, the Amador County Chamber of Commerce, the Amador Council of Tourism, and the Amador County Ventners Association and created an MOU. While moving our office this November, I found a file containing the MOU from January 5th of 2013. In that file was three pieces of paper, of which one of them had signatures on it. This is the only file from that MOU that any of us can find in any of our offices. So I thought, what the heck, let's get together and discuss this since we have this one piece of paper to go off of. So it was the catalyst to move forward with groundwork for what had already been completed. So since December, we all have been meeting together and discussing what was put together in the MOU. And we've established some areas of focus and a lot of areas of overlap that we have within our organization's goals. And so, and we all just want to support each other in moving forward with our goals because we do have that overlap. So using the Amador County Economic Development Strategic Plan, we've identified ways to support the county in implementing the strategies in this plan. And each, each of us all have a different focus with a very natural overlap. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to.
You know, I know we've heard from you guys in the past, we've each come up and presented, you know, You know, I know we've heard from you guys in the past, we've each come up and presented, you know, why are there two of you? Why are there, you know, where are you each getting funding, you know, that type of stuff? But we've decided, and this is in the very early stages of this, as Tracy explained, you know, we're just kind of dusting this thing off and, you know, trying to work, we realize that we work in different areas as far as ACT and the, and the Amador Chamber, but we've kind of agreed that this is probably a, you know, possibly a good opportunity for, for both organizations to work together, you know, to move things forward. You know, the Cliff Notes version of this was, you know, the coordination of business and industry recruiting, you know, should be done by the Amador Economic Development Office. The Chamber and ACT will support and definitely contribute to this process in any way that that we can, at least, moving forward. Coordination of new business, Amador Economic Development Office and the Chamber will work together, you know, to encourage new business opportunities. The Chamber and ACT to coordinate aspects of business retention and expansion. And the coordination of the tourist promotion. ACT will take, serve as the designation marketing organization for the county and to work with the Chamber. And we all agree that, you know, obviously, working together and combining our efforts, you know, make this work better for the county moving forward. Discussion of funding with the Wine Heritage District, as Tracy talked about, and the tourist and marketing districts. Coordinating efforts to improve the business climate in the county, development of strategies, policies, agendas to improve business climate. And then also, you know, one, one of the, the nice things that we, we talked about was, you know, the education and training, you know, to improve the business climate. The Chamber will be coordinating a business resource event this June up at the Italian Picnic Grounds, where we're going to have, you know, half hourly, you know, discussions for businesses to come learn about, you know, just about anything. So look forward to that. And then also, what I liked was the discussion about recruiting and hiring, plus the jobs training with the Amador County Schools, getting the schools, getting, you know, back involved. You know, there used to be programs in these high schools back in the day where, where they would, you know, go out and, and do, you know, onsite job training and stuff like that, and trying to see if we can't get that together. So just another way that, you know, the Chamber and ACT are trying to work together to help both, you know, the business climate, tourism climate in the county, and see if we can't, you know, improve all of that.
Okay, thank you, Matt. To kind of continue further on the working together part, there are so many amazing events that take place throughout Amador County. And it's been a task, as Brad can attest, to try to get a calendar to present that so it's properly advertised, it gets into the right hands, and that not only locals know what's happening, so we can also have crab feeds, for instance, not all in the same night. So we can plan our internal events better, but also all of the people that are coming to visit us can make plans and therefore result into more heads and beds and overnight stays. So that's one of our main goals, is the calendar and event awareness and pooling that and working together to create one cohesive event calendar. We're also working together with the Ventners Association and the Amador County Chamber to do a social media seminar and also having a speaker from ABC talk about Tide House, which for those of you that are wondering what that is, it's basically anybody that has any type of restaurant, winery, bar, when you're, you know, advertising yourself onto social media, there are certain laws and rules that apply to alcohol beverage advertisement. So they're going to speak about that to really educate not only the businesses, but all of people trying to social media and get more views to their sites. So that'll be April twenty-second at Hellway Winery at ten AM, and that's open to everyone, so we'd love to see anyone and everyone there. And then the other thing that kind of goes along with the events is having a visitor guide. So there are so many amazing pamphlets for every single city and throughout Amador County, but to try to cohesively wrangle that into one entity that can be given out to people that are visiting. The Chamber has a lot of different great information, we have great information, all the cities have great information, but that's something that we want to work together to have a cohesive visitor guide to be able to produce for people that are coming to see us.
Well, needless to say, when you bring all these people into the county, hopefully we've got businesses that can take care of them. And our efforts as the Chamber of Commerce throughout the county is trying to help the businesses develop, maintain, and progress. Essentially, we're doing some seminars that are trying to help them in marketing, human resources. We've got a program this next month that is just discussing all of the new laws that just came into place. God, it may be a full-day seminar, even though it's scheduled for two hours. But we've got social media programs, we renewed our emphasis in that direction. We try to help the business owners work with how to get money, SBA loans, programs in that direction as well. And then, yes, we've got streamlining some of our printed materials for a cohesive look. We're working on that, trying to get a uniformity and going in that direction.
So we just want to also talk about the Visitor Center in Sutter Creek. This effort has been put together by a completely volunteer organization spearheaded by Lisa Kozwalski, and it's all community-funded as, as it has been funded by the, the county as well and many local entities.
Yeah, so basically, as far as for the Visitor Center still, since they have such a great volunteer network, it really makes sense to have that be a Visitor Center because it's constantly manned, because that's one of the things that we've struggled with is just having the staff to be able to be in said center. And it's a, it's a great location, they get a lot of traffic coming through there. So that was one of the things of trying to use that as one of the, maybe the main sites for the Visitor Center. Because since we've moved in with the Ventners Association, you know, they're able to also see people that are coming into the county for winery region topics, so it kind of makes a lot of sense to streamline efforts and finances and utilize the spaces that we have.
Yeah, I think that's something the board has asked about multiple times over many years. And it just, it, it's logistics.
It is, it's hard.
It is, and there are lots of unknowns with the rental climate in our community. So there's lots of unknowns in the rental climate in our community. We don't know who's going to raise the rent or who's going to say it's not for rent anymore.
It is interesting times, that's for sure. Many different, many different aspects.
Yes, yes. So, so that's, that's what our Amador Business and Visitors Alliance have been up to. And we're, we're really working hard together to, to, to really push things forward as an, as a single entity and make things happen in our community.
You're asking for a lot more money than last year. And Chamber's asking for a little bit more, but you're, you're asking for, what, about eighty-nine thousand, eighty, eight thousand five hundred dollars more than last year.
Correct.
That's a big jump.
It is, it is, and we've, what we've done in our organization, as you know, is that we have, we've changed who, how we're doing business. And, you know, we really took a, a look back at, at how we can meet our mission statement as Amador Council of Tourism. And, and that mission statement states that we're actively going to increase awareness and visitation to Amador County, benefiting the local economy while providing unified harmony with public and private entities. We have shifted to a working board. We have taken the funding and moved it to seventy percent, over, increased seventy percent to marketing. So over nine, eighty-five percent of our budget goes directly towards marketing and awareness of the Amador County. And so that has flip-flopped from over eighty percent of our budget used to go just to administration. We are, we are performing exactly what we're supposed to be doing.
Probably should have done that quite a while ago.
Hmm?
That probably should have been done quite a while ago, it's probably a good move.
I don't disagree with you, absolutely. And, and so what we've done is, you know, the things we've talked about before, we've done a commercial, we've done incredible advertising, we're on billboards in front of San Francisco Airport, we're on Highway eighty in Vacaville, we're, we're doing radio spots, social media influencers, digital marketing. We've improved the website and, and its functioning, and we're seeing a whole lot more visitation. We're also being able to track things and find out where they're coming from so that we can understand what's working and what's not working.
Talking about digital, what's your digital campaign with Flynn Creek Circus?
The Flynn Creek Circus is a California-based circus, and they, they have come here for the last two years. They, I think they're coming back this year. And they are a small version of Cirque du Soleil. And, and it's, it's, you know, getting that out when we do advertising with them and promote our area.
Do you pay them for advertising, or how's that work?
No, we pay to advertise them being in the area. But it goes all the way from San Diego to Portland.
I've never went to one of the shows, but I was on their website and it looked rather interesting, you might say.
It's, it's very much like a Cirque du Soleil performance, and it's, and it's wonderful. It supports the arts and gives not only people in our community something different to do, but it also brings quite a few people from outside of the.
Do they bring the semi, adult semi nudity shows here, or haven't been to one, just kind of, which one of the shows they brought here?
No, they have the option of having the burlesque show, but we chose not to have the burlesque show.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It looked rather, yeah.
I have a couple more questions.
Please.
Do you charge any member fees at all?
We charge a hundred and fifty dollars.
And the, the contractor marketing, admin accounting of fifty thousand, was that in there last year?
It, it was also part of our budget last year, yes.
Fifty?
Total.
It would have been helpful if you had the last year's budget, not just your estimates like you have.
It looks like most of your increases are going to be for direct advertising.
It's just direct advertising. We are asking for much, much less than any other county in our, in the Gold Country region receives. The, the next closest to us receives over four hundred thousand in funding for promotions. And while we're asking for more funding, we also believe that the awareness building that we will be doing with the brand of Amador will, will also result in higher TOT, higher tax revenues, higher visibility for Amador, and allow us to compete for a growing market that doesn't want to travel necessarily forever and maybe just wants to come two hours or an hour away. And because Sacramento has grown so much in the last four years with people escaping the Bay Area, they're still learning about us.
You know, if Calaveras, I think you were referencing them, if they get their money primarily from TOT?
Yes.
I think they've got, like, Big Trees probably is a real big draw over there, I think, in, like, Bear Valley.
Absolutely, but we have wonderful things here, too. We have the Preston Castle. They don't have a haunted castle. It's pretty amazing.
Actually, a lot of people like that.
We have the Black Chasm. They have the Morning Caverns, but we have the Black Chasm, and the Black Chasm is much more beautiful than the Morning Caverns.
It is.
I guess they have California caverns, too. What are your metrics that you use to measure? And can we point directly at, by, by increasing our advertising budget, you get more TOT? Is there any way to?
Yeah, we.
Fish that out of an analysis, or?
We can, the, the actual numbers come from an organization called Dean Runyon, and they issue reports. Those reports are typically not available until May every year.
But like last year, did, did our TOT increase as a result of the advertising? Can we?
Last year, well, honestly, all of this advertising has really taken place since the end of November.
Okay, so this is new.
Yeah, so all of, so kind of our, our shift in becoming a voluntary board is when we really ramped up because we were able to put all of those funds to that. So it's kind of hard to equate the direct number you're asking for because prior to that, a lot of our funding was going to our director. So we were, we, we saw a, we definitely saw a bump in increase in stays when we had the circus come to town, for instance. But, you know, what, what we kind of base a lot of our numbers on and the increase of our ask, and we'll reference Calaveras again, in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, Calaveras saw, you know, over a million five increase while Amador remains flatline. And so in order to be competitive and be able to really show you in the, the next fiscal is, this is, the proof is in the pudding, because we've, she kind of had some screens up earlier of the campaigns that we've been doing because, you know, we've been spending a lot of money on advertising and billboards and getting the Amador out. We just went to a trade show in Santa Clara, we had one of our amazing members there, which saw over fifteen thousand people. So there's a lot of things that we were able to do current as of two thousand twenty-four that was not possible prior due to budget.
Let's see, do we consider or analyze TOT that's collected in the cities? Because even though it's not, it doesn't go to the county, it's still probably benefit, they probably benefit from the work that you do, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Which, yeah, I mean, in turn, which you're going to see us again, the dynamic duo, when we come back to talk to you about the TMD, which we'll be addressing in the near future. But it, it, we have a lot of lodging partners that one hundred percent see an increase in stays, especially, we just started working again with SF Gate and doing different promotionals, and that's seen a huge, you know, increase in the past. We did a giveaway in December where we, I was on Fox forty and we did, promoted the Parade of Lights in Sutter Creek and had a giveaway, and so we had over, I want to say like three hundred and fifty entries, which was great because they had to enter in a person throughout Sutter Creek and other Jackson, Plymouth. And, you know, and that's where we kind of, coming full circle to where we're getting our numbers, a lot of those zip codes were Roseville, Elk Grove, Sacramento. And so that's kind of also the trend, is people are looking to go, you know, that two-and-a-half-hour, three-hour radius, and we want them to come here and spend their money and promote all these amazing businesses and, and see all that Amador has to offer.
So our proposed budget for twenty-four, twenty-five increases the impressions and awareness ten times of what we're able to do with the, the previous funding. So it's, it's not in, in relativity and ratio, the amount that we'll be able to increase those impressions and that information, getting out to people to, to teach them about. Ever, do you ever go to Sacramento and somebody says, where are you from? I say, I'm from Volcano, and they look at me like I've come from outer space. They're like, where's Volcano? And we're just in Sacramento, we're, you know, forty-five minutes, an hour away. And so by, by being able to make this awareness out there, people are going to come here, and they're going to be curious, and they're going to come for many different reasons and all of the amazing things that you all know about in our community.
You know, one, one concern I do have a little bit, though, is people say, hey, you bring, you bring all the, a lot more traffic in the county, what about our roads? And I think it's a fair question on their part. Yeah, you need business in the county, I get that. But also, it's like, you know, you want a lot more money. I think the Chamber, I think a couple of years ago, I think they were, I think at forty thousand, I believe. And they said, hey, they were struggling, and the county bumped it up by sixty or eight, eighty thousand now. And it's, and I, with that said, I will say, I think, I think you both do a good job. The Chamber has really bumped up their game a lot from what it was. But I have some heartburn over any increase at all, just because I'm looking at roads. I look at Fiddletown Road, and, and you know Hale Road. I look at Fiddletown Road, and you know Hale Road, I'm sure.
Ultimately.
So it's, I'm struggling with your request.
I appreciate that. And I just want you to understand that an increase in visitor spending and visitorship to Amador, if it was just ten percent increase and that directly correlates to T O T, which is where this funding is coming from. So just if there was a slight ten percent increase in overnight stays during the next fiscal year, there would be a actual R O I back to the county of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars based on current occupancies. So that could increase. And so, you know, we're an investment that's going to come back to you. It's going to pay back into the the county coffers because the people that are coming here to visit, they're buying gas. So they're contributing to the road tax by paying gas. They're buying groceries. They're shopping in our our mostly, almost every single business in Amador County is independently owned. They're shopping in our independent stores and supporting families and making our economy stronger. And that helps then increase more jobs. And it does also, at the same time, allow, once there's more people here visiting and buying things and taking home great memories and and whether they're out canoeing and kayaking up in Silver Lake during the summer or they're fishing in Comanche or they're they're going to the Kennedy Mine to explore our amazing history. They're they're contributing to our tax dollars, which then does come back in essential services for the community. So, yes, it does, it it is more money, but it also is money that's going to go back to promote people coming here to spend their money and create more tax revenue for our community.
We should probably have it here. You don't happen to know what the T O T numbers, I know it's gone up, what they've done the last five, ten years.
We're projecting, yeah, well, last five or ten has gone up significantly. We're at three ninety now, three hundred and ninety thousand. We're projecting for the current fiscal year and for next fiscal year, given the flat line we're seeing on sales tax. So we're projecting the same thing.
But I thought it had gone up quite a bit from where it was, it seems like.
It has, it didn't.
Some was the increase that we put, the extra four percent, I think it was, or whatever it was. But I think also it has increased even beyond that.
Correct.
Well, we also recognize that A C T has also been a detriment to the county, as in Daffodil Hill. You know, that was in direct relations to an advertisement that went down to the bear. Yes, it was.
It's, well, it's it's not a, it's a detriment that Daffodil Hill closed, but that is a that is a problem that is seen all over the United States.
Right, but this was directly attributed to A C T and and their heavy advertising for the county at that time. You know, because we had over two hours.
That's the first I've heard of that.
It was over two hours of people backed up along Daffodil Hill. And that's what the family decided was, you know, the deciding factor. Because I was, I attended one of the board meetings when they were all excited about, you know, the advertising they were doing at that time to push that. And that was the perfect timing because it was in before, in between storms and everything else. And that's another thing that's always hurt Daffodil Hill was was storms and no parking. So this is just, that's the problem that we have to constantly look at, is what can we handle in this county? You know, what is the, you know, as Supervisor Neto says, Hale Road? You know, because people get lost back in that back country trying to go to Kirkwood, to go to all these different functions. And so we can only handle so much.
Absolutely. And the only people that would come to Volcano in the last twenty-seven years either knew exactly where they were going or were completely lost. So having a business in Volcano off and on for the last twenty-seven years, I completely appreciate that. And and I I understand the concern and I and I think that that is a very valid concern. But I also think that there is a concern within our community in how to keep our economy strong and to how how to support all of our small businesses. And I think that with our local economy and our locals supporting the businesses, we can, we can make it. But with tourism, our businesses can really thrive.
But it's it's also, you know, Volcano, you know, I just had dinner there last night at Seismore's. And it's, you know, just finding, you know, during the week, having dinner, you know, I'm still parking quite a little ways away from it. So it's always, how do you function with what you have? On a weekend, it's an incredible amount of parking down there, you know, so it's.
And that's a good point. So by, so I think what's kind of, what we're asking for is to be able to advertise, to not just get on the weekends because we all get decent weekend traffic. It's that midweek where there's nothing here, it's a ghost town, and people are trying to struggle and then they just hit on the weekend. And if we're able to have that additional funding, to have a directed presence of focusing them on. So I'm going to use your comment that was a negative to flip it into a positive of that. You know, we achieved getting an amazing result from advertising. So that was, first time I've heard that that's why they were closing. But but if we can achieve to focus that advertising to do midweek when everyone is suffering and needs heads and beds and we have these amazing hotels, we don't want to lose more businesses. We don't want to have more empties on the streets. I live in Plymouth, a lot of empty buildings in Plymouth. And so I feel like we need to, you know, with the right funding, you can be able to really direct where your advertising is going. And then also, by being able to partner with the Chamber, businesses are going to have the education and awareness of how they want to market, how they want to, you know, deal with the different crowds, what we can do to help logistically if they're having issues. So it comes full circle of, you know, the being able to work in tandem to help the business and then help bring, you know, people to said business, so.
You know, we've been talking to you for years about getting back together, so I praise the alliance. But there is an alliance. And there's only a hundred and ninety thousand dollars and you want, that we have in the tentative budget, and you want it all. So that doesn't leave anything for the Chamber. While we're trying to get where it's close to a fifty-fifty split. So let's be an alliance in name only then.
No, and and we're all working together. And like you, like we said, all of our, all of our efforts, while they're focused, there is a lot of overlap, so.
Yeah.
Well, if it's a hundred and ninety thousand in the budget and they're asking, Chamber's asking for eighty and they're asking for one oh one, that only comes to a hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred, so.
But they want a hundred and ninety themselves.
Well, Chamber's asking for a hundred, eighty to a hundred, and A C T's asking for one ninety. But, Mr. Ily, how would, is this doable? How would it affect our budget as it's as it's presently sitting?
Well, the the number I presented to you last week, our last board meeting, had one oh one five for A C T and eighty for the Chamber. And so going going up by a hundred and ten thousand dollars would increase our deficit by a hundred and ten thousand dollars. One oh one five to A C T and eighty to the Chamber, which is the same amount that we've got this year. Because we I we have, what we're telling staff as a status quo budget. Don't ask for more.
I have a little bit of heartburn with that, those numbers. And nothing gets a job the Chamber's done. I think they really, it's doing the best, they're doing the best I've seen in years. My gripe a little bit is, it was, they were at forty and then we had like a one year, one year, I think it went to eighty, and next year it stayed at eighty. I understand our T O T is going up, but I'm just, my gripe is 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 roads. I mean, we, and it's kind of like, if we don't find some money somewhere, and I I guess our roads need a lot of money. So it's not like forty thousand here or a hundred thousand there is going to fix all of our roads. But if you look at it, a little here, a little there, a little there, over year over year, it does add up. So I'm darn sure not looking to do any more than what you already have, a hundred and one five and the and the eighty, if that, but that's just where I'm at.
The Chamber folks.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be fair.
Come and talk, too. But we we appreciate your consideration. And just know that that we, whatever we do, we're doing on a volunteer basis. We do it with no, no benefit to any of us on the board. We do it for our community. And we believe that the rising tide lifts all boats. So whatever it is that you can do, we will work within that budget. Of course, we would like to see that budget increase so that we can do more and and show more improvement and help start, you know, really creating some economic stability within all of our businesses, within the entire community, so it does thrive.
I think one thing did help us a fair bit was, I think during COVID, a lot of places, communities shut down and people went, almost too much up here, quite honestly. I think a lot of people did find, hey, there's, you know, Amher County, Calaveras County, wherever places were still open because a lot of places, you know, you couldn't get a meal, you couldn't this, you couldn't that. So I think that was probably helpful. Now some that's kind of backed off. I know Shenandoah Valley was actually fairly busy during COVID, surprisingly. But just, I was just a thought. But, yeah, I think it's probably time for maybe the Chamber of Commerce to.
Absolutely.
Hey, so you said that a lot of that advertising has already been spent between, what, November and today?
And June. We have contracts all the way out till June.
So you would be cutting some of those if you were not funded?
Well, the funding that we have, which would, if you stay with a status quo, would only last about six months to be competitive. We could spread it out, but the effect would not be as as significant as we feel it's going to be. It takes a little time and a lot of repetition for people to remember and have the the county brand impressed upon them. But it it definitely would hinder some of the advancement that we hope to continue on.
I think the county needs to, I'm a proponent of trying to increase a bit. I don't know what that bit is, but I, maybe we do thirty percent at a time, maybe we do fifty percent this year and with the plan to go further next year. You know, I don't think it's confusing. If you advertise, you're going to get people come in.
All the budget deficit.
Well, but that's it, that's what I'm saying. Trying to give the county an opportunity to to work with the the budget we have and realize that it's going to be fifty, fifty thousand or whatever next year, shorter.
And and we hope that it's not because that T O T is going to come in from those visitors that are staying and that increased visitation is, could offset the those increases.
Kind of a chicken and egg kind of thing.
Absolutely.
But it might be good to take a small step and then see the, see some of the results. I know that, you know, you've made the argument, you need to reach a critical mass to really shout loud enough to to reach the other people. But maybe that's where we are as a board. We may not be able to to go as far as what you would like at this time.
And and we understand that. We completely understand that.
Right, and I don't see a resolve from the entire board to go up to one ninety. So I'm trying to find somewhere, find that happy spot that that the board can live with, that our C A O can live with and our budgeting staff so that we can pay our bills, too, in the future.
Presumably, if you do a good job, then the T O T is going to come in and we'll be able to pay the mortgage on Downey Brook.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's our goal. That's our goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Tohma, President of the Amador County Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here today with Brad Bernard, our Executive Director. Brad, along with Julie Lyman, back at the office at our our Visitor Center here in Jackson. They've done some amazing work this last year, increasing, you know, coming out of COVID, the Chamber obviously really struggled. And the last couple, two or three years, we've been trying to build back. And obviously, with your guys' help, it's taken us about, oh, a couple of years ago, it took us a year just to kind of wrap our minds around membership and and renewals and who's in, who's out, you know, what's going on. And we finally got a hold of that with your guys' help the last couple of years. You know, the our our Visitor Center, it fields, you know, daily calls, lots of walk-ins. I'm really actually amazed at how many walk-ins we get that come into the office, not only from just locals, but from obviously a lot of visitors looking at the Chamber for for information, hands out, handouts, flyers, all sorts of other tasks that that these guys do on a daily basis. I'm also here with, there's quite a few of our board members in the office, pretty much all of whom operate or own, you know, businesses here in the county, taxpayers and have been here a long time and believe in the a healthy chamber in today's business and tourism climate. The Chamber Board includes, I'd like to introduce you to, so you guys know who who's running this outfit, Kevin Barnett, Sharon Lundgren, Erica Simmons, Jim Giede, Rich Hoffman, Beth Bernard, Katie Dunn, Joey Giede, Susan Manning, Paul Mullenelli, Jr., Ashley Cornicello, John Williamson, Lucy Hackett, Michael Curriton, and Laura Ray. It's really nice to be surrounded by a board with so much knowledge, energy, and enthusiasm, you know, to try to keep this thing going and help, you know, these guys come up with ideas every month at our board meetings that are nice to see. First off, I want to thank you guys also for considering our T O T funds request and especially the T O T support that you guys have given us in the past. This doesn't happen without your guys' support, for sure, for sure. I also want to thank Supervisors Crew and Forrester for your representation at our monthly meetings. It's also nice to see a lot of you guys, Jeff Brown, Brian Onetto, Supervisor Axe for attending some of our mixers. As you guys can see how well these things work and bring our, bring our businesses together. Also want to thank the county for allowing us to use your upstairs boardroom. That's been very, very helpful in in some of our situations. The Chamber of Commerce has been serving Amador County for literally decades and strives to be an advocate for business tourism and to help stimulate a vibrant economy, retaining jobs and helping create business opportunities. With your help, the Amador County Chamber of Commerce offers a way for tourists to find our local tourist sites, hotels, businesses, organizations, and events to better plan their time here in the county. The Chamber of Commerce is a nationally known brand that tourists look for to get information, as we've seen from many calls, walk-ins, emails, and especially lately on our social media requests. Our staff Visitor Center provides colorful guides for each city in Amador County. These brochures, along with others, are given out to groups and individuals wanting to know what's happening here in the county and where to spend their tourist dollars. We've also created and have been working on a community calendar of events that not only tourists, but local organizations can use to see and schedule any of their upcoming events. Our monthly mixers, which are hosted by some of the county's larger tourist sites and hotels like the Kennedy Mine, Knight Foundry, Preston Castle, Amador Flower Farm, and the Kyoto Inn, just to name a few. By the way, you guys are all invited to next month's mixer at the at the Knight Foundry in Sutter Creek. Hope to see you guys there. Attendance in these mixers has been more than doubled on average compared to last year's attendance numbers, which were up significantly from the year before. What we're finding is our businesses and our members are seeing these as a great opportunity, not only to mix and mingle and see other businesses, but to get the word out for any events or or opportunities that they might have coming up. None of this would be possible without your guys' support. Our request this year to the board would be for one hundred thousand dollars in T O T funds, a little bit of an increase from the last couple of years you guys have given us. One of the areas that we are increasing our spending that we've learned is working obviously is is advertising, you know, trying to trying to get, you know, more advertising out, more social media. We're noticing huge increases in that, in our social media presence just over the last few months, thanks to our new consultant, Christian Cardona. While we are increasing our membership, we are seeing an increased number in businesses struggling to meet their needs due to the economy. And as you all know, increased costs in rent, utilities, insurance are taking away from some of our proposed programs and to help build up our Visitor Center. We are requesting, excuse me, requesting this funding to. We are requesting, excuse me, requesting this funding to continue to build on what we built with last year's funding and to ensure Amador County has a strong chamber to support future growth. Thank you again for this opportunity to request these funds and thank you again so much for your support over the years. The Chamber of Commerce is striving to support our local businesses and tourism and to promote growth and excitement for the business and tourism industry and to respond to the needs of tourists that come to or want to come to our county. This all take commit, great commitment from our board, staff, members, sponsors, community partners and you, the Board of Supervisors. Tourism is a big part of everything that makes Amador County what it is. Our rich history, beautiful scenery and amazing places and events attract tourists from all over and it's our job as a Chamber of Commerce to serve them well while supporting each other. The Chamber of Commerce is committed to doing just that and thank you again for your time. I know Brad's got a few things he'd like to add.
Why? One of our programs is the Be a Tourist in Your Hometown. This is focused on, you know, we live in an area and you forget to get out and look at places. When was the last time you were at Roaring Camp? When was the last time you went to some of these places? So when we do some of the networking mixers, we pick places, or the committee picks places that are in that vein. We also have this advertising program throughout the year where we feature a community. And Volcano is real easy because it's the whole town of volcano. I mean, it's, there you go. But we'll get into areas where we pick out the local businesses and try and give like an itinerary. Start your day off, drop your dog off over at the vet's center. Sit down, have a cup of coffee over at this location. You've got hotspot service here. Right on through the day, we try to make it to an event that makes it something where people live locally, can actually get out and see some of these tourism type places. And again, the word of mouth is always tremendous. The social media that Matt just brought up, we've seen over a four hundred percent increase in engagement just in our social media since we brought in Christian Cardona to assist us. Got the Motherlode Cruise Car Show coming up in Jackson in May again this year. And last year, we had over two hundred cars, brought in huge numbers of people from outside the area and shopping all day long on Main Street in Jackson. As you walk through the shops, they were, they were just packed. It was great. It's, it's again, another program that we work on to try and improve. We've got seminars. We've talked about that a little bit. We've got, for example, we're doing an H R seminar, as I said earlier, covering some of the new laws. It's free. We just did a QuickBooks online seminar because they're dropping their support on the standalone programs and it was intended to try and help make the transition easier for people. Again, free, we had a good turnout and still going forward in that direction. We've got marketing, H R, S B A, insurance type things, all coming up at the, the Business Resource Forum that will be in June. So has, has the S B A done anything at this point with the Chamber?
No, they have not done a presentation. They're going to be in on June twenty second at the Business Resource Expo.
And this is the S B A from south of here.
The San Joaquin County?
Well, no, that's west of here. Yeah, San Joaquin County has deliberately just, you know, ignored us.
We're working on that.
But I believe that this S B A is the one that's south of San Joaquin County. So they're, are you working at all with Dave Taney and the?
No.
No?
The folks I've been working with are out of Sacramento.
Okay.
In particular.
So you don't talk to the ones at Delta College?
No, I don't. It's not out of choice. It's just who's talking with me.
Okay. Yeah, I told you.
Name a number, I'll call them.
They don't, anyhow, we've, we've talked to them from, since the time I was on the board and they were going to do something and then they just.
Just disappeared.
Yeah. We're busy over here.
If I have a name and number, I'll, I'll dog them.
I think they, he moved upstairs.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, we're, I, the numbers are growing. We've been working on it. But I, again, we're seeing retention rates that are struggling in some cases. Some businesses have gone under, some are just struggling with rent issues, et cetera. We've got a couple of businesses that, the first part, we changed all of our billing to annually January through December instead of every month, what we did before. And it was, you're always chasing your tail, trying to figure out who was paid up and who wasn't. And at this point, what's happening is we do have a couple of businesses that kick into gear at about the end of March, April. And they've already said, we'll renew, but we got to wait until then. So we've got a few that are dwindling there. But at the same time, there's, some of these brick and mortar people are really struggling out there. And rent increases has been a big one in insurance. The Kyoto Inn in Jackson and Express, I know you guys have already talked with the tool about his rate increase from twenty-two thousand to a hundred and forty-eight thousand a year. We sent a letter to the Insurance Commission for what it's worth, just, you know, asking for action, but God knows, that'll go nowhere. So. Yeah. And again, the idea is to, again, you guys have graciously supported the Chamber over the years. And we've seen now, after running it for a couple of years, the way it's been run, and we see now what works and what doesn't work. And the idea is to try to build on what our members are requesting, what's working for them and just trying to build on, build on that moving forward. Yeah. But thank you guys again. Really appreciate your support and your time.
Oh, your total number of members now is up?
Yeah, we're over three hundred and it looks like we're approaching tripling the numbers when I first got here with the Chamber. So we're flexing a little bit. It's hard to try and get a real read with, like I said, a few of these businesses that are hanging in.
Triple's a big number.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we came before you, I believe it was just last year.
One twenty-four.
About, yeah, about a hundred, about a hundred and twenty-five or so. So we've, and they're, the numbers are going up and going up. Now, we're, we're seeing a few, very few that, you know, I think they dive into the Chamber and go to a few mixers and, you know, some of them realize, okay, it's, you know, it's not for me and I'll drop my membership, but for the most part, we're retaining pretty much all of them. Yeah. So a lot, a lot of new businesses, a lot of new faces and a lot of new energy. So it's, yeah, it's nice to see.
Quickbook Seminar?
Pardon? Went well, went very well, well attended. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Would you have fifty people or something?
No, we had about thirty-two.
Okay.
But, but even still.
Somebody couldn't count. They told me there were fifty people.
No, what you know, and we're still trying to figure out what are the right days and times to have these things. So it's, because the shop owners, when can they show up? The H R seminar seems to be something they're really looking forward to. Again, we're trying to record these things and then we'll get them on our website so those people can still tap into the, the resource.
Was that Quickbook on the clouds, on the cloud?
Yes, yeah. It was a newer, newer version. Yeah. That's why I think.
Integration, oh, boy. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from the crowd? Yeah, please come forward and speak if you.
My name's Connie Austin. I.
Yes, speaking to mics, if you would.
Connie Austin is my name. I'm the current President of Amador City Business and Community Association and a new board member with A C T. I have to say that A C T is doing an incredible job, as is Amador City. And it's because of money coming in that we're able to talk to people outside of the community and in the community. Part of that, my experience and my honor was being at the trade, or excuse me, the Travel and Adventure Show in Santa Clara for the Bay Area in San Francisco. The number of people that came through there was fifteen to nineteen thousand. Now, we only got a small portion of that, but in the Gold Country booths, we were grouped together, Amador County blew the socks off. It was fantastic. We were beautiful. We had numbers coming through. They were backed up. Because people want to know, how can we go someplace close and enjoy ourselves, get away from the hustle and bustle? And they saw Amador City for the first time. Many people didn't even know where we were. Fortunately, we had a huge map of Amador County on the wall behind us and it, it drew the numbers. People stood around wanting to know. These are the people that will come between, you know, Monday and Friday, the people that will increase the T O Ts. So I just want to let you know that this was our theme, I adore you, Amador. And this is done by a local artist in Amador City. I just want to encourage you to do whatever you can to increase those numbers because if you don't invest a little bit more, we can't bring up those numbers a little bit more. And by next year at this time, you will see significant changes. So I want to thank you for your taking the time to listen and understanding the challenges that we're all meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello again. Chris Colton with Amador Senior Center. We are a member of the Chamber of Commerce and just very grateful for what the Commerce provides. The Chamber provides for resourcing for organizations like ours. There are a lot of things on my mind as I'm sitting, listening to the conversation. And what struck me is a lot of conversation around T O T and extra money and that sort of thing. But I think there are a lot of benefits that come to a community through promotion and driving tourism into that community. For one, it promotes the community in a way for future retirees. Folks come and recreate here, participate in the events that take place, get to know community members and would at some point maybe enjoy retirement here. And this becomes a place for them to come and live and become contributing members of Amador County. I also think, as I think about Sutter Amador attempting to bring more primary care physicians into a rural area in their residency program to do such, as doctors and potential nurses from other communities come and visit and interact here through some of the promotions that these organizations run, I can only guess that they might fall in love with the area as well and want to come work here and maybe start businesses here. So I think there's a lot more than just T O T. The larger picture is really promoting the atmosphere of Amador County and the opportunities to raise children here or to contribute in some way. And I guess I speak out of the reasons why I'm here and what brought me to this area because I'm not originally from here. But I, I came to love the foothills and to enjoy the recreation that's here and the slower pace of life. And I would hope that my skills and abilities have made contributions to this community in some way. And I think that, that that can certainly help bring more professionals into the area looking for that slower, slower pace of life or recreation. And I guess I would recommend maybe to the board, I'm just wondering as I sit over there, I wonder if there could be some sort of experiment or kind of a pilot project, if you will, because I'm a big fan of those and launching kind of new ideas. If there was a pilot project in which, excuse me, you were to increase funding by a certain amount, whatever you agree to as a board, and then reevaluate T O Ts next year and see what it produced. But perhaps there's something you could do to provide that pilot project for this group that's, that's so willing and capable and sounding very passionate about bringing more people to this area for not only the reasons they discussed, but I guess the reasons that I've presented to you as well, the potentials of people becoming connected to this community in some, some very important or critical way. So those would be my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. Thank you for allowing some comments. And thank you for actually describing me perfectly. I have been a property owner in Amador County for about twenty years. We owned some property for a long time and then used it as a vacation spot, then eventually moved into a city. We own two homes, one our primary residence because we've just both left our big city jobs and moved here permanently. We have a long-term rental and we also own two commercial buildings. I retired myself last year and we are in the process of starting a small business in Amador City. And as part of that process, I've been investigating, excuse me, the Chamber, A C T, spending time going to meetings and understanding what these organizations can bring to me as a new potential small business owner from an economic development standpoint?
What was your name?
Elena Lyons, sorry.
Elaine?
Elena Lyons.
Elena Lyons?
Yes, yes. So I am exactly the person that he was just describing. And so for all the, all the reasons that everybody's described, it's almost impossible to start a new business here and only be reliant on just the county population to generate business. It's almost impossible. The numbers don't pencil out, partly because of all the reasons we've talked about, insurance, real estate and, and trying to attract good employees. And so we really struggle. So we do need those tourist dollars. And they really make a huge difference on businesses like mine because we're going to be generating sales tax, because I'm a property owner, we're generating property tax and making these investments in the county. And so when you invest in things like the Chamber and A C T, it isn't just money going into a, a group that you don't see benefit from. There is huge community benefit. The standard of living gets raised for everyone in the county because there's more places to eat, more places to shop, more interesting things to do. And so I really encourage you to consider what you can for your budget because I understand there's a limited budget as well and lots of demands. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Nicole, when you're ready.
Hi there. My name is Nicole Shabel. My maiden name is Jackson and I am a girl from up country. I'm currently helping A C T with their marketing efforts. I will say that I am the administrative portion of what comes into the budget there. But I was brought on late last year to help with social marketing efforts and then have also been brought on to help with the additional marketing and public relations that we're attempting for the county. My family owned a small business in Pioneer and I have a lot of personal investment in success of the county. Well, I know longer, live in Amador County. I live in the neighboring county. You can take the girl out of the county, but you can't take the county out of the girl. I'm back to try to help Amador County bring in tourism. I worked for the Ventnor's Association up until COVID. I started at Renwood in ninety-eight and worked there for a number of years. So I have a little more investment in this than just to collect a paycheck. Having said that, I just, again, I just really implore you, I realize that the ask is high, but maybe even as was mentioned, doing some sort of, uh, increase in budget and then a reevaluation at some point might be helpful. I would like to say that, just to address the Daffodil Hill issue that came up, you know, that's a season that's three to four weeks long on a single four- acre parcel. So I do understand the concern with road traffic and things of that nature. But obviously, we, the county as a whole has continued to try to advertise Amador County Wine Country and draw people here as opposed to Napa Wine Country. And because of the extra money that's been brought in, they were able to repair the roads that lead to those wineries. That's the intention, obviously, for us as well. Having more than just a four-week season for the activities that happen in Amador County, I think that that's what we're really trying to focus on. We're not just trying to bring everybody to one location. You know, Knight Foundry has increased their own personal advertising and their hours to try to bring people here to focus on history. I make a valiant effort to work with Visit California to try to increase tourism for the county. Our reach just in the past month alone throughout social media has increased over two hundred percent. We had a social media influencer here last week who visited Black Chasm Cavern. It's been viewed over two hundred and nine thousand times in less than twenty-four hours, the videos. I think that this is, you know, crucial to try to bring in new businesses to Amador County, as has been mentioned, but also support the county as a whole. You know, like I said, I grew up there. I had family that owned small businesses there. When I walk the streets of Jackson, Plymouth, Amador City these days, there's a lot of empty storefronts. So in order to support the county, we do have to bring some people in. And again, our focus isn't just to bring people to one location. And again, our focus isn't just to bring people to one location. We're really making an effort to focus on different pieces based seasonally. So I just really implore you to allow us to continue to market that. And as everybody knows, costs have gone up, and that includes marketing. So nothing's free, nothing's going down. So any print advertising, any billboards, any of that that we're doing, those prices do continue to go up. We've worked a really valiant effort to try to allow businesses to come in and co-op with us to try to bring those prices down, to try to allow us to do as much as possible. But again, you know, there is a lot of cost associated with that. So that is my piece.
Hey, we have another Zoomer, I believe. And thank you.
Go ahead, Kirsten, when you're ready.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Maki. I am a resident here in Sutter Creek. I have family up here that have lived up here for over 40 years. And I grew up here as a kid and have only recently moved back in the last five years. I am involved, I have my own business. I work from home. But I do meetings and events and also work with nonprofit associations. And so I was introduced to ACT through Tracy, have just been volunteering and helping them with some of their programs. I will tell you that they are on a shoestring budget right now. So really, all of the funding that they're getting is going to marketing and promotion that benefits the community and not to overhead costs or salaries, which is wonderful. So I just want to encourage the Board of Supervisors to fund in whatever way they can ACT and the Chamber. I think bringing people in for tourism and whatnot benefits. To me, it's a win-win. I heard some comments about concerns about the roads and whatnot. However, I think that the money brought in will offset a lot of things. And it will benefit not only existing businesses, but hopefully bring in new businesses into our community. So I think it's a great effort. And so I support the increased budget request. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, a little comparison between us and Calaveras County because that's been brought up before. Calaveras generates $2.4 million a year in TOT. And they give $400,000 to the promotion. The rest of it, they give to the sheriff, to fire, and to roads. And the general fund still takes $212,000 out of it. So it's a difference between a county with five cities and one that has one city. And that's, take that as you will. But we have just a hair over 20,000 people living in this unincorporated county. And they have Murphys. We don't have a Murphy's, it's unincorporated. The cities, you know, hit us.
So they're probably giving about, say, 16% roughly of their TOT, and we're given almost half.
If we go to 390 or 290, it would be much more than half.
No, I mean, at what we're doing currently, we're a little under half.
Yes.
That's interesting numbers.
We coming?
Any more discussion? I mean, I can understand the ask, but I think we bumped the Chamber from 40 to 80 two years ago, and that was a pretty big step. Personally, I don't see raising it. I'd like to lower it quite honestly. I'm looking at roads. But, you know, I mean, maybe somebody thinks that's funny, but that same person's in there beating on me about roads. So I mean, if, you know, if you want your cake and you want to eat it too, and you can't look at it and say how pretty it is if you want to eat that cake. But it adds up, 20 here, 50 there, 20 there. At some point, you're talking some real money. I think both entities have really stepped up their game. I like what I saw in that graph, you know, your admin to marketing. Hey, that's what you got to do. I mean, admins, you need some admin, but it can't all be admin. Personally, I think I'm in favor of leaving the status quo. I mean, I think over here, they want to raise it. I'm not quite sure where they're at here. I think they're probably staying fairly stable, is my guess.
Well, I think one thing, and they both have great presentations, not personal at all, but number one, the Chamber has a quantifiable increase in numbers. And I realize that ACT is working on a different plane with, we're hoping to bring them in. But to me, adding to the deficit is not what we should be doing. We're asking the employees who we see every day to give us a zero-sum budget, work with what they've got. So I don't think we should raise the amount, $190,000. We've been working for parity to get them. They admit they both do good jobs. I'd split it right down the middle, give them both 95.
I think if you want to see a quantifiable increase, then you fund a portion of what ACT is asking for and see what that does to TOT in the next year. Chamber has done a great job. And let's face it, closing the gap of 40 or 50, I've seen Mr. Ely do that with his eyes closed. I'm sorry, but that, when you're talking about a budget as large as ours, which is small compared to a lot of counties, those kind of gaps are easier to close. So I would make a motion. You're ready, Mr. Chairman?
Not quite yet, actually. Okay. I think there's probably a little more discussion. But still, you want to make the motion. We have a second, still more discussion. But I, one thing I'd like to bring up, I think that gap may be a little higher. Maybe partially my fault. I think the Public Works Director was talking. I told him, hey, put a couple people in there for the road crew because we used to have, I think, four, maybe five road crews. We're down to two. And some of the roads we have out there, quite honestly, I'm embarrassed by them. And I know my rear shore gets sore from being chewed on, and I don't blame the people that write. So that gap with those two employees is probably closer to 240, 250, be my guess. Maybe not quite that, say maybe 230.
You have to get that approved. And I don't see that getting approved, to tell you the truth.
It may not, but I think I'm going to try pretty hard for it. And I think this is part of the way to get there is we're keeping our numbers static. It'll get us closer to that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at keeping the Chamber at 80 and maybe bumping up ACT to 110. That's my thought on it. But not, you know, just keeping it within the, you know, what we're trying to, we're telling all the, our own staff to keep it at minimal.
Why are you rewarding one and not the other?
Because they're rewarding themselves. As I look at their own budget, they've got their own people trying to go in. You know, Chamber's trying very hard to do everything, which is a business-oriented item. You know, this is something that they're trying to get organized on their business. You know, ACT is just flat-out advertising. So it's kind of an interesting gambit to work with.
True.
I'm leaving everybody static where they are. So that's where I'm at. And I think at this point, we're probably done discussing. No more public comment out there. I think we just need somebody to come up with a motion that we can all accept, hopefully.
We'll see. I would move, then, that we increase the Chamber from $80,000 to $90,000 and increase ACT to $131,000. That would be up $29,500. And that is so that we can gauge the results of the increase in advertising this next year on TOT and hopefully have a better metric to look at at possibly raising it future, in the future.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Forster and a second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay?
All right, then I would go back to my motion, that we protect the deficit and give 50-50 split. They are in alliance. They should get equal money, so make it 190 and split in half. We've been working on getting them equal for years.
So how much are you proposing?
95 apiece.
So you're actually cutting ACT then?
Yeah.
Can't agree with that.
Neither. Moreover, ACT is not funding any staff. And you're talking about this deficit. Well, yeah, if the TOT stays static, there will be. But if you're spending more on advertising, your TOT should logically go up.
Good.
Yeah, well, sometimes you do have to take a certain amount of risk.
I understand.
Okay?
Yeah.
And you're very risk averse.
So you're basically raising about $10,000 overall cost?
Oh.
Is it 95-95?
Well, that's 190.
Yeah, we're at 180.
190 apiece, whatever we spent last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a hard one to buy off on because I know what the Chamber does. They're nationally branded, they have an advantage in that way. But ACT is spending most of their money on direct advertising. That is not what the Chamber does, and that's very expensive.
Yeah, they're a little bit different animals to a certain degree. I think if maybe they ever get combined, maybe you could still have administration and not have the cost between the two. And I think they're kind of working that direction some, and I appreciate that effort. But, yeah, I, anyway, if you want to make that a motion, I think I'm not going to go for it because I like to just keep it static. That's where I'm at. And maybe, I think they're going to oppose you, so that might be a tough motion.
Could I make a third motion? My third motion is just keep it static, as is presented in front of us, as 80 and 101 500.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Okay.
This is getting interesting. No second, so I think gears, dice, or lack of second.
Okay, you can pass the gavel and second it.
Well, I mean, if, why should I second it? Nobody else is going to vote for it.
Never know.
I mean...
I would go back to Supervisor Brown for your original motion then. Her original thought was to take ACT to 110? And where to go with the Chamber?
My original was 110 and leave the Chamber at 80.
Yep. We needed to decide this today. Let's move on, okay? We have a public hearing and a lot of other things to do.
No, I think we should decide it at some point. Chuck?
Well, the budget contains a status quo, so it will contain that until you tell me to do something different.
And I guess we could change it at that point there. Maybe we can think about it and...
At any time.
And go up, maybe in groups of two, and go back out back and fight or something. Okay. Yep, looks like we're in pass, so I guess we'll talk about some more at the budget. So we'll take a break, and we have some 10:30 hearings. So we'll take about a five-minute break. We'll come back at...
Do we want to mention the budget workshops on, what was it, April 24th?
Yes.
So be the next time we talk about it, unless we bring it back.
Okay. So we'll take a break actually till 11:30. We'll come back at 11:30.
Development by April first of each year. And the contents of the general plan reports are intentionally flexible to give each community the opportunity to prepare and present that data however suits their needs. With the housing element annual reports, there are there's very specific guidance and rules on how to do that. And the state provides the spreadsheets and forms on that you have to fill out in order to help them track housing data each year. So there's no flexibility really in how that's presented to you. And then the reason this item is all lumped in with the public hearing is also included this year is the 2023 or with the 2023 reports is the five-year performance monitoring report that was required by the general plan settlement agreement. That agreement required that we track data for specific study areas that were included in the settlement agreement, present that data to you, and if there were negative trends that were inconsistent with the general plans, goals and policies, that we recommend action on how to get back on track. So that'll be the third present that's reported. The state doesn't require that you approve the reports, just that you acknowledge that you've received them. And so that's the requested action of the board today is your acknowledgement of receipt of the reports in any direction to staff that you that you deem appropriate prior to us sending these in on the at the end of the month. And with that, I will turn it over to Krista Rousell, who is our report repairer and presenter. Thank you.
Good morning. So yeah, I'm Krista Rousell with the Planning Department. So I will be presenting kind of a summary of what was in the 2023 general plan annual progress report. So this does cover for the calendar year for 2023. We do have reports prepared for previous years, and those are all available online as well for the public. And this will be uploaded as well once it's approved. So. All right. So within the report, I mean, you guys all received it, but I can go over kind of the elements within it. So we do have discretion of how we present the information and what information we choose to include within this report. So we do have kind of a summary of some of the general plan related activities for the different departments within the Community Development Agency. So that would include the Building Department. I'll just go one by one, I guess. So the Building Department, they include the Title 15 Building Code. They are the ones that permit all new structures and everything within the unincorporated areas. And they also are the leads in enforcing the fire and life safety code. So they see pretty much everything that's being proposed and submitted to the county for being built. So obviously, for that reason, this information, kind of the nature of what kinds of permits and things are very interesting with respect to the overall development within the county. So and all of the housing data that is submitted within the Housing Element General Plan Annual Progress Report, that's the one that's within that Excel sheet that's submitted to directly to OPR and HCD. We get all that that data from Building Department as well. So thank you, guys. So also in the report is the Transportation and Public Works Department kind of summary. And obviously, they're an integral element of development within the county. Everything kind of revolves around the circulation and access and how things work within that greater kind of map of how things are connected. So we have a little bit of information from them as well. The Serving Department is now under Transportation and Public Works, but they work very closely with the Planning Department because a lot of like the propositions for new maps and parcel maps and land division and recreation of new maps, making new parcels, that all is through the Serving Department. So we work closely with them. And then Environmental Health Department is our lead on pretty much anything water-related, wells, septics, and wastewater and special programs within the county as well. So within the report, there it's broken down further, kind of the nature of what like type permit types and everything that were issued within the 2023 year. But that's some of our departments and then. So then the other departments within CDA are also highlighted too. So Waste Management is responsible for recycling hazardous waste and overseeing a lot of our solid waste disposal facilities within the county. And that's, you know, obviously related to operations of everything. So because everything produces waste. So that's that's related and also summarized within the report. Amador Air District, they're responsible for monitoring air quality pollutants, giving us counts. And they are our liaison between the the boards to the air resources boards. And Code Enforcement is under planning as well. And Code Enforcement kind of covers, you know, code response to everything within all the Community Development Agency. But I just specifically wanted to note that all of our noise complaints are routed through Code Enforcement. So and that's a specific element of the general plan. So. So moving on, it's planning. That's us. So this is just breaking down some of the meetings, and I do have a comparison within the, I mean, for the previous calendar years. So the meetings can indicate certain trends, just given to the nature of projects that require certain meetings to be held and reviewed. But it's not necessarily, you know, a surefire way to determine that, hey, if we have more ag and natural resources, meetings are more mining, more mining activity, maybe, not necessarily. Because we also have, you know, more complex projects that require multiple meetings and everything. But it's still interesting to see kind of how it's laid out and obviously it's helps kind of say what we're up to overall. So within planning, we do a lot of the evaluation of the housing. We also process use permits, zoning and general and we evaluate general developmental trends. So we look at all the permits and everything that are, you know, compiled through this report and just through throughout the years. And we can kind of see, hey, this is a hot topic, like for now, maybe it's the wineries and stuff. Maybe other times it's kennels or something. So it's 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 kind of interesting because we can see kind of all of the different things when we make this report that people are applying for and what I guess general interest is within the county. We also monitor a lot of the natural resources, such as like, I guess, we kind of look over the water stuff. We look over mineral resources. We do monitor mines. And I mean, well, I guess I'll go over the independent parts of the general plan that we do also kind of keep track of throughout the year as well. So this is just a summary of some of the more large-scale, long-range planning projects that I'm sure some of these are very familiar to you guys. So I include within the report, you know, there's a breakdown kind of of which of these projects were passed, which were, you know, denied, and then how, I guess, they may impact future development and what our projects look like going forward too. So I know that the ones listed are all ones that we actively were working on within the 2023 calendar year. Specifically, I think, design guidelines, scenic view sheds and addressing the residential and commercial. Those are three that have not been completed and we're still actively working on. So you'll see that again in next year's report as well. So this is just a overview of what's in the general plan and what's required to be in the general plan. Our general plan was approved in 2016, and it's basically good until 2030. For a large portion of after it was approved, it was in litigation. So we didn't necessarily start implementing some of the the measures until after it was settled. But within our current general plan, we have the land use element, circulation, the housing element, which is adopted separately, the conservation, open space, noise and safety. And we also have governance and economic development, and those are both optional elements that we did opt to include. The environmental justice element is interesting because that was recently made a requirement. So it's currently not required of our general plan. Our general plan is in compliance, but we will need to address that in the next general plan once it's proposed, and that will be in 2030. So land use is the first general plan element. So within it, I'm just going to do kind of a summary. So the main goals and policies are listed above. So as you can see, it's pretty a wide breadth of different topics that are covered within the land use because land use really is kind of a blanket of everything. And then those are the implementation plan measures, which I kind of determined fit under those goals and policies. But obviously, there's a lot of wider applicability of those various programs into other elements as well. And so within the report, the way it says, it'll have the implementation plan measures listed, but it will state which goals and policies are referenced. So this is just to juxtapose, so juxtaposition it next to each other. All right. So the next one is circulation and mobility. So you can see it's, these are the goals and policies of that. And so pretty much everything that planning does is related back to the general plan in some way. So a lot of that kind of is just through our normal operations and ongoing, you know, implementation of the county code and handling development projects as they're proposed. That's all part of what we do. So. So this is an excerpt from our Housing Element APR. So I did kind of cut out the parts because a lot of them are, I guess, not necessarily relevant for us because we are such a small county. The table on the upper left, table B, so that is our RENA count. So that's Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And that's the the big reason why we have these housing reports. It's setting these, I guess, income brackets for housing that we need to meet within each cycle. And so each cycle is multiple years. I believe, I mean, looking at it, we don't have a huge amount of housing development, but we also don't have a huge population to drive that necessarily. So I don't, at this point, I think we're well within, you know, what would be expected for our development. And I know that we do have some projects too that should address some of those shortfall areas as well in the upcoming years that will make make sure that we meet. So yeah, if you look down to, there is a comparison of kind of the permitted units by affordability. And as you can see, those numbers are very low overall. I mean, we just don't have the population that's driving huge amount of housing. So as far as like whether or not there's shortages, I mean, a lot of it is kind of dependent on the market overall and the general California climate of housing. But I mean, even with how crazy things have been in the last few years, we've we're relatively stable as far as like how many new houses are coming in. People are still coming in for permits for building houses, you know. And some of that is probably helped by the new kind of ADU accessory dwelling unit regulation with the state, basically expanding the ability to build ADUs for a lot of people. But that's could be addressed later. So. And I mean, we did address that separately through our Motherlode ADU project too, which is how, which within this last year actually helped provide some informational materials to the county, and we have those available as well. So. So this is another element within the general plan. So as you can see, a lot of it revolves around conservation of resources specifically. And then so when we have a discretionary project that's up for, you know, approval, we include standard mitigation measures to ensure the preservation of cultural resources, historical resources. And then we have a lot of best management practices that we just include as mitigations for those discretionary projects. So I would say that those are the primary ways that we implement the goals and policies within this section. Sometimes we do get projects that have like specific, I guess, sensitivity to one of these resources and such. And then in that case, you know, we are always prepared to develop specific mitigations and have to make sure that there is not significant impact to any of those resources through that project. So open space, it's fairly linked with conservation, but another thing to note with this, we do have the Williamson Act within the county. So that's related to that too. I didn't put it up there. But in addition to that, we do have the scenic corridors, which is up 88. And then we have natural resources and species protection, which is related to the previous slide. So noise, this one's a little interesting because we do have that fairly new noise ordinance, which applies to residential uses. But in addition to that new development, we do have every project that comes through. We also evaluate for potential noise impacts. And I know this is a tends to be a more contentious one because it's such a big issue when you have like industrial uses or commercial uses adjacent to residential. And so I guess addressing the whole, not urban, but more community interface with the more industrialized or production side of industries and stuff, that can be an issue here. So I mean, every time we get a project, we evaluate it. And sometimes we have to come up with more inventive mitigations and stuff. So. Safety is a very interesting one because as you can see above here, there's not really a specific thing that mentions global pandemics, which I think is interesting. So moving forward, I mean, when we come back in 2030, I would assume that we may have to address something like that about situations that might cause people to be quarantined and such. I don't know. But as it stands right now, the primary things that addresses are fire and flood hazards and earthquakes. And then the general public safety and emergency preparedness aspects. And those are also evaluated with projects. A lot of projects, when it comes to this, their location is kind of the key because when you're looking at projects that are up country or in areas that are higher risk for certain hazards, we're required to come up with even more mitigations to address those potential issues. So. And then governance, this is one of the optional elements. But a lot of this is just us coordinating and notifying other agencies when we get projects and implementing their incorporating their comments as well. A notable one is also the tribal tribes locally. We do have legal obligations to notify them and consult with them regarding projects. So we do that throughout the year when we receive projects as well. And then economic development is one of those others that kind of catch everything because everything comes back to where's the money? So so we look at a lot of the industries within the county and how they're, I guess, doing overall and then what kind of projects have impacts to those. And so one notable thing within this is we do have a provision within our code that requires an economic impact analysis for for larger scale projects. I think they have to be 5,000 square feet or more of commercial space. And we really don't have very many projects that meet that minimum. But I think we currently have one under review that is going to be required to prepare an economic development or an economic impact analysis. And then we have had one project in the past that required it. So we're we're still kind of dialing down exactly what information we need to be incorporated in those reports. But as of today, we've had one submitted and we have one that will be required. And then so that kind of segues us into the next part. So this past presentation reviewed the activities within 2023 only. So as Chuck stated, we do have this accountability accountability measures and monitoring review for the general plan overall. And so this was one of the requirements at settling the general plan. And it requires us look at certain specific concerns or topics within county that relate to development and the general plan. So a lot of it was data compilation, just reaching out to different agencies and seeing what kind of information we can get that would inform how we're doing in these different, I guess, areas of the county. That's it. So I guess that's what this is. So it's for the last five years. So it's 2018 through 2023. And so one of the things to note with this is this is the first report of its type that we've done. It's the only one we've done for the 2016 general plan. So the data sets that we received, I mean, it's only the five years. So it's more of kind of a snapshot. So the idea of this requirement that we create this is to look for trends. But I just wanted to keep in mind that five years is a relatively short amount for collection and to kind of inform trends, especially when three of those years were, I guess, one of a kind, right? So so we'll just move forward, but I can give an explanation too of some of the the data tables that we present. But this is the specific goal that and the requirements that, I guess, inform this report and how how we're supposed to prepare it. So the first, I guess, parameter is agriculture and agricultural health. And I did want to note, so the goals up there, those are for safety, but I can read the ones that are correct. So it would be land use 1.5 and policy land use 1.5. And those are to encourage continued viability of ag productions in the county's agricultural areas. And then there's also goal E-8, which is to preserve the land base necessary to sustain agricultural production and maintain viability of long-term ag land uses. So within this, overall, we don't see a lot of change for agriculture. It's it's a huge part of the county, but we don't see huge amounts of coming in or going out. In the last 10 years, we haven't received any requests for non-renewal from Williamson Act lands. So overall, we are seeing a net increase in contracted lands, which is good. And then as far as the agricultural production, we got a, we compiled the data from the Ag Department, and that's also in the report. I didn't put it up here, but it's relatively stable. So it's we're not seeing big increases or decreases. So you can take that as you will. As far, we also looked at the timber permits in production. And that is relatively stable. A lot of that is driven by fires because a lot of the, when there's a fire, we get more increased in timber production because we salvage the trees and stuff that fall. But yeah, as far as overall trends, there's not really much fluctuation, I would say, overall for the agricultural ends. Variables within this are fires, if there are fires, the amount of water and rainfall. Obviously, that impacts crop yield. And then the overall economic climate too impacts how well things are selling. So those are all things that were evaluated, but overall, there's not been significant negative trends for either that would be inconsistent with those general plan goals and policies. So for wildland and public safety, we have reduce the fire risks to current and future structures, maintain or improve fire response times. So this is something that's always kind of being reevaluated because safety and hazards are always something that's, you know, the top of everyone's list as far as what we want to make sure doesn't happen, you know. So within the last five years, there were several notable fires that did impact Amador. I also have the Butte Fire, which was a major one, but that's outside of the study area. The most significant ones were Caldor and Elektra. And then I know that there was the Ampine Fire, which was not a wildfire, but it was a structure fire and that took out one of our businesses within the county. The government proclaimed disasters. There are also severe winter storms, which impacted a lot of residences residents as well. And obviously, previous droughts too impacted residents. But overall, I guess. So we looked at some of the emergency service response times. We looked at, I guess, policies and everything that were developed following these fires, the types of fires, causes. It was confirmed that, I believe, Caldor was confirmed as human caused and Elektra wasn't confirmed yet, but it was also on Fourth of July. So that's just a thing to note. So I mean, as far as wildfires, it's still a fairly small data set for us to look at. But overall, I would say that we weren't hugely impacted to the point of being inconsistent with any of the general plan policies. You know, we are always learning, unfortunately, you know, in response to some of these disasters. But there was nothing within our response, I think, that was inconsistent with the general plan. On, so we have the economic and business health. So this is one of the big ones that COVID impacted. I know we had a presentation from the Council Tourism and ACT. So this is kind of redundant as far as that, but we looked at the trends within the last few years. And we did have an increase in sales tax and transient occupancy tax. So overall, I would say the economic health of the county, you know, is improving, you know. We're always, we had a huge dip during COVID, but we bounced back, I would say, fairly successfully. And we do see, you know, new businesses coming in and everything. So. Moving on is the jobs and housing balance. So up here is, you know, as I said, we don't have a huge population that's driving housing. We do have two projects that kind of addressed that recently. That's the Motherlode ADU project and then the Wicklow Way specific plan. But when we were, oh, and additionally, we also had the Housing Element update. Keep forgetting that one. That was a big one. So we have a lot of new data from that regarding the demographics and everything in relation to housing. So we're still looking at that and seeing how that is, I guess, going to change and how that data can help inform policy and everything. But overall, I would say that everything is consistent with the general plan. There was one thing I want to note. So a big thing that I guess people want to watch out for or whatever is the jobs to housing balance. So when there's an imbalance with jobs to housing, you're looking at the insufficient amount of housing that causes economic growth to slow. So basically, that's when you have not enough houses for employees. So therefore, people aren't coming because there's such a high demand for housing and they don't have anywhere to live when they work here. We're not seeing that here. We really, I mean, with our work, our working population is low enough to the point that like lack of housing isn't something that really keeps people from moving out here. A large population of our residents is, you know, retirees and everything. So we're not seeing them necessarily even factoring into the employees that would need housing. But a lot of retirees also own multiple properties.
I think it's impacted, you know, people doing the jobs quite significantly.
Yeah, I mean, we do have people, there's the whole.
And our housing needs to really focus on, you know, more high-density apartments and things like that. I mean, we're, we keep building homes for retirees, which, okay, I get that. But the services need need to be provided too. And those, these are people that aren't paid enough to to own a house.
Yeah, and I mean, that's.
That's a real problem. And, you know, the planning needs to occur across the county, including the cities. Because this is a, this is going to lead to some significant problems. It already is with with respect to water and wastewater.
What, what, was that in our packet? I don't remember seeing that. What page is that on?
So this is just a presentation that we prepared. It's summarizing the information within the jobs and housing balance section of the general plan mitigation and monitoring report. So the presentation will be made available after too.
This could go back and tie into economics, though, that if you don't have the housing, why should a corporation come here? If they have need for 500 employees but no place to house them, that's probably going to be a big negative check mark.
Yeah. So I mean, yes, I was going to say too, so the Wicklow specific way specifically is proposed within the Martel area. And that would address some of our housing shortfalls if it were built out. As it stands, though, there, you know, there definitely is a shortage as far as rental properties, lower income housing, all that kind of thing. And we do rely on the cities a lot of the time to provide housing for residents all throughout the county. Because a lot of the areas that aren't within cities are underserved by a lot of the infrastructure requirements for higher density housing. We really don't see that many people applying for higher density housing, but we do get people asking about it. But a lot of the time, an issue with that is, oh, well, you also will need to provide wastewater service, water service, roads, all of that kind of thing. And all of that, when you're coming in and we don't have specifically zoned areas that are widely available for higher density. The, I guess, the environmental review and everything and the permitting process for getting those higher density residential developments approved is so burdensome, a lot of like smaller scale developers are turned away. So.
I think a lot of that's being streamlined too by the state.
So unfortunate, unfortunately, most of the streamlining options are for promoting infill and for in for urban centers. And because of the small population of Amador, we don't qualify in most of those situations. The, I know some of the areas within the city, they are able to take, cities are able to take advantage of some of the infill streamlining and things. But when it comes to the unincorporated areas, we just lack the infrastructure and the population to qualify.
Well, we do like the infrastructure.
Yeah. And so the the reason I brought up Wicklow specifically is because within that plan, there is plans to expand wastewater. So that would be in conjunction with, I guess, in cooperation with AWA, which is our water, primary water service provider and wastewater service provider in the county. And if that were to be successfully built out and everything, they would be able to potentially expand their service to beyond just Wicklow. So a big thing is just that we don't have the infrastructure to support this higher level of housing that we really kind of need at this point. Especially when we're looking at developing some of our unincorporated town town centers and communities. So roads, that's another thing. I guess it kind of goes with the whole development overall, where you're looking at areas that we discussed, the road conditions, you know, that's always a concern and also just. The, the road conditions, you know, that's always a concern, and also just, we don't, we are looking at potential developments, potential impacts to existing road services. So, I mean, overall, I would say that we are, in general, you know, in need of road repairs. And then when it comes to adding new roads or adding new developments that are going to increase demands on those existing roads, we're running into issues there too. So I guess that was our comment on that one. For the biological resources, this one, there hasn't really been that much significant change overall within the county, just because we don't have large-scale development to the point where it's severely impacted a lot of these resources. We did look at some of the changes in status of some of the existing special status species as designated by the state. But again, I mean, every project, discretionary project we get, we do evaluate relative to those existing resources and creatures. So air quality, again, has also kind of remained stable. Obviously, when we have fires, that impacts air quality. Overall, I think we didn't not meet any of our parameters, except I know with ozone, we were kind of bouncing between attainment and non-attainment with that. But, I mean, in the grander scale, it's not signif, it's not a significant red flag, at least for us to necessarily be flagged and have to develop independent policy at this point. But. And then water quality kind of works with the previous topics we were talking about, where just looking at the water availability. And that's a big thing that factors in when we're looking at housing. I know that we do have some, like, residential subdivisions that were proposed. One of them was actually denied based on the inability to provide sufficient water, even though it did meet what was the county standard per code. So with that, with hopefully our upcoming code update, we will be reevaluating kind of what are the exact requirements, and then how accurately do they reflect the overall need for water? And, you know, tightening down that language, basically.
Why is there a big jump in the regional water quality control board citations?
I'm glad you pointed that out. So in, I believe it was 2020, right? Yeah, they, we transferred our responsibility for the water systems and everything to the state. So the state took over all the monitoring, and so therefore, they kind of did a mass kind of send out and mass evaluation just to establish a new baseline. So while we had had some people that were not meeting the requirements previously, when the state went out, they kind of went.
These are the small water systems that people use for, like, restaurants and things in the unincorporated area?
I don't think it's only the small. I think, I'm pretty sure the citations, it addresses smaller and larger water systems. So something to note, though, within those numbers, they're not all necessarily, like, unlicensed discharges or anything. So they include, like, notices, people not, like, failing to report on time to, and to. But, yeah, I mean, that's why the, the jump is because the state took over and they went on a rampage. No, I'm just kidding. But they went and they checked up on a lot of the, the sources and.
Yeah, this was environmental health kind of led us through this process of relinquishing our responsibility to the state. Okay.
Oh, no, it got scrunched. So wastewater treatment, it goes hand-in-hand with water. But again, I mean, we're looking at the issues of not having the adequate systems to address things, and that's not necessarily, I guess, something that we can super easily address, except with, you know, development of new systems and expansion of existing systems.
We could just do, like, Mule Creek Prison, just let it go downstream.
That, that's an option. It might not be the best one, but. Yeah, so, I mean, when we're looking at some of the, and that's a copy from the, the previous table, the citation ones, it's just the same because it applies to both. But, I mean, overall, we're not looking at huge negative trends for any of those categories, really. It's, there's underlying need for housing, you know, we have underlying road problems and everything. But I would say that as far as implementation of the general plan, nothing has been inconsistent with those goals. We're just, it's just hard problems that we basically have to work towards finding a better solution, but it's not necessarily an easy fix and stuff, especially something.
The housing things are a real issue. I mean, you've got a couple of problems there. I mean, infrastructure's one, but also you've got, I mean, in California, a lot of people don't want to be landlords because you're a landlord and you don't, you don't have any rights, and the renters have a lot. And the, we, the price of materials have gone out of sight. Just, I mean, trying to build anything, it's, it's, it's almost stupid with the prices.
Yeah.
So people trying to, you know, if you're, if you're to build, to build a high-end home or a low-end home, a lot of your costs are the same, and one you can sell for half a million, a million bucks, and then one you're going to sell for 300,000. Well, it doesn't pencil.
Well, and when we look at the housing data too, I mean, we're seeing the majority of houses that are being built are not falling within those lower income brackets, so.
They can't, they can't afford to bill, build them. I mean, it doesn't.
Well, there are subsidies in some cases, certainly for a higher-density type houses, apartments.
Okay. Continue on, you're doing good.
Oh, well, I, I think I was done. I think I was on the last slide where I was just going to say thank you for everybody, but.
It's a good presentation, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a working progress, and I think that's what's also important to keep in mind is that we are looking at a snapshot of five, five years. So this is just kind of also helping us establish kind of a baseline of what we're going to be looking for in the future, what areas we need to focus in on more, especially going into 2030 when we do need to update our general plan. So for sure, something that could be looked at is increasing the areas where higher-density residential is easier for people to do. But again, it takes a developer too to come in with the money sometimes, so, I guess, and that's, that's all.
Okay. Any questions? No Zoomers? Well, thank you, Krista.
Do we need a motion to accept that, President?
Well, I think we need public comment.
Yeah, actually, we've got an open public hearing for public comment, so it's time the public hearing is open, which I did earlier, but any members of the public?
Yeah, we do.
Got one coming up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Lords of the Board, Greg Barco, Fodhill Conservancy. Just like to, first of all, start off by praising the efforts of staff to prepare all the reports that are before you today, since in part they're done on our behalf and is part of the Conservancy settlement with the county over the general plan. Just like to highlight the effort that's been made, thank everyone involved for their work. It's a very useful document. It has a lot of accountability, a lot of information for both our decision-makers and the public in general. The data sets involved are sometimes incomplete or don't have, face some special circumstances. I think one in particular, the commuting data, where we're talking about jobs, housing balance, and the need for commuting, the, that census data that's collected in 2010 and 2020 at the height, in 2020, at the height of impacts from COVID. And you see a big, massive spike in job loss. You see a massive increase in telecommuting. I think some of those trends will continue. A lot more people working from home, but job loss has pretty much been entirely reversed. There wasn't, you know, the long-term, the county is not going to lose 15% of its jobs in terms of long-term unemployment trends. You can actually see that in some of the other data sets where we spike up to almost 9% unemployment in 2020, drop back down in subsequent years. So just wanted to mention that in looking over things. The rest of the document, I recommend members of the public and all our decision-makers to review that information. It's quite useful. In terms of the reporting on the general plan, just need to highlight a few things, items, policies, and items of the general plan settlement that have not been acted on. It is now been closing on eight years since the general plan was adopted, and the county zoning code has not been updated to reflect the land use element of the general plan. There's a number of changes that were out, that were outlined and identified and implemented in the, in the land use element, bringing in mixed-use town centers for several areas of the county, removing some old problematic zoning, adding new industrial zones, the Ion area. None of that can be implemented until the general, until the county zoning code is updated to reflect all those changes in the land use element. So what we have are basically some good ideas on paper that just can't, don't, aren't yet implemented in law because the zoning map and the zoning code don't reflect those changes. And we're closing in on, as I said, almost eight years, and we haven't done that yet. The couple elements in the settlement agreement, these are two, two sets of design guidelines or design standards. It's identified in the report as design guidelines for town centers. Actually, the settlement agreement, the language is actually better than that. It's commercial guidelines for all commercial development in the county, not just the new town, mixed-use town centers that are identified, and also design guidelines to protect view sheds in the county. All this ties into this morning's discussion about economic development, tourism, encouraging visitations to the county. In much of the county, we sort of lucked into small charming downtowns that are walkable and very attractive for people to come visit. Sutter, you know, Sutter Creek Jackson built these back before there was any source of codes. Then the mines all shut down, so nothing got redeveloped or torn down and, and changed. But if we want to continue to see that kind of development, if we want to see welcoming design, welcoming layouts in our future development, we're going to have to ask for it. We're going to have to have design guidelines. We're going to have to protect the scenic view sheds of the county so that we continue to remain an attractive place for visitors, that when you come into Alton County, you're seeing nature and not ugly development. And this is all part of the general plan settlement, and we would like to, as the Conservancy, like to work with the county to move ahead with these items, move them through the process, develop them, and see if we can't make the county better and fully implement all the aspects of the general plan and the settlement agreement. Like to thank you for your time. Staff's been taking lots of notes.
Frank, do you have a comment?
No, I was just, I was just looking at my colleagues on the other end of the dais, that's all.
Okay. We're having too much fun here. Looks like no Zoomers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that'd like to comment on this?
Well, I guess, I guess the comment I, I should make is none, none of those settlement agreement elements are going to occur if there aren't three votes to make that happen. So, you know, staff put a lot of effort into Dark Skies, and that got voted down. So I believe that we did enter the settlement agreement, you know, with the intention of, of doing something, not, you know, in a, in an honest way, and I don't know if that's really occurred now, so.
Yeah, I think one thing there too, Frank, was they try, they didn't try to just take a bite out of the apple. They tried eating the whole apple. That was.
Okay, well, then, then maybe that's why you, why maybe more engagement from those that voted no should, you know, occur so that something can happen. Otherwise, staff just goes out and does, you know, what they can. They're, they're listening to other people and, but not listening to you, because that's not occurring. And staff doesn't really want to work on things that don't, that get voted down. Do you?
Well, I think there's things that were, they were pressed to put items in there that were probably just too onerous.
Well, couldn't you have taken a scalpel to it or a chainsaw and just?
It, it would have taken a chainsaw. A scalpel wouldn't have worked. There was too much.
Okay, dynamite, whatever.
Yeah, nitric glistening, yeah.
The onus is on, on you, not, not, not planning staff, because, you know, you need to vote for it.
Any other members of the comment, public that could comment?
Seeing, let's see.
Do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, we're going to need that, and I'm just looking here.
Motion to close public hearing? Second.
A motion by Brown is second by Forster. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. And then looking for motion.
I'd move to accept it, the draft general plan and draft housing element annual reports and the draft five-year performance monitoring report.
Second.
Motion by Forster, second by Axe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carries unanimous. Thank you. All right, thank you. Good job, Krista.
Yeah, well done.
Moving on, this is item 5E. This is State Route 88 Pine Grove Quarter Improvement Project Update.
Twice in one day. Good afternoon, Board. Just as a recap, back in January, we looked at the bids for this project. They, they were over what our project funding was, and so we rejected the bids for the project. And staff was directed to go back and take a look at the project and try to reduce the scope of the project so we can come up with a project that's within the scope of the existing funding for the work. And we, at that time, indicated that we would come back to this group for an update. So that's what we're here for. In the materials that was in your packet, I kind of summarized where we're at. The, our design engineer has taken a look at the project and reevaluated his unit costs for various bid items and such.
Was there, so basically, they changed any, any of the units, like the concrete pipe? Did they change that plastic or anything like that?
There was some look at that. I, I don't know. I think it would be safe to say that there is some reduction there, but I think the, the, the magnitude of that didn't make a big difference versus a reduction in the scope itself.
Okay.
So, and so, you know, based on some refined numbers, based on the bids that were accepted, the engineer now has, has, we've got to propose a reduced scope of a project, which would include the signalization of the intersection of Highway 88 and Sutter, excuse me, Pine Grove Volcano Road, improving the pedestrian crossing near the town hall to include a hydrant, hybrid beacon there, do some sidewalk improvements near the elementary school, and, and some, some minor road and shoulder improvements there. And, and also modifying the existing egress from the school, like it was proposed in the original project to come off of, onto Pine Grove Volcano Road. And so those improvements, they are, are estimated to be about $6.8 million, which is within, if you recall, the original project estimate for the whole thing was 7.6, and that was within the, the existing funding. So this reduced estimate would still fall. fall within the available funding that we have for the project. We tried to look at if we can make an extension of the project up to Irish Town Road heading west, and, you know, the numbers don't pan out for that, what we're looking at now. However, if we get favorable numbers from the, from the bidders, there could be an opportunity to extend improvements to that intersection. It might, the way to do that is we would take an alternate bid approach to include those improvements, to extend westward towards that Irish Town Road intersection. I guess in saying that, in recapping the bids we got originally, we had one bidder that was, was, had some fairly good numbers compared to the rest of the bidders. So if that, if we got bids in that were similar to that low bidder's numbers, then we would probably have that opportunity. These numbers are reflective of an average cost for the items that were received from all those bids and.
Hey, Richard?
Yes?
One comment. I know that right by the Pine Grove Town Hall in front of the, you know, the little plaza that was, you know, Zoltan Novakis, they actually moved the PG&E, I believe, moved the power poles, and that was going to be carved out as some parking that could then be used by the town hall. And if there's a way, you know, if that's not too expensive, that would be really good. I don't know if the parking on the other side by the park is going to add more parking, but, but that would actually create, I think, at least three more parking spaces for patrons of the town hall, and they wouldn't have to cross the street. So I think that that would be worthwhile to add if, you know, we leave out a lot of the other stuff going down, you know, as you head west. But that would be one thing that I think would be worth cherry picking if, if possible.
And I think, you know, if, if we move forward, that's something, with the item you're talking about, it's not prohibitively expensive.
Right.
Might be, might be worth.
As long as it's not a million dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Was there, Rich, was there right-of-way acquired for that? Or would that, there was? Mark, Mark's saying yes.
See, right-of-way along the, are you talking about the corridor itself?
Yeah, it would be right on. It would, you know, where the, if you're facing the town hall, if you look to the left, there's like a curb, and then it's all dirt, and then a wall that demarcates the.
All of, everything that's on the corridor itself, we have TCEs and/or acquired right-of-way for that. We currently own it. So anything within that corridor, we would be able to move forward with any proposed changes outside of what we're already talking about. So if that's, if that is wanting, if you want to accommodate that, we don't have to worry about getting the right-of-way, so.
Right, I, you know, that was part of the original plan.
Exactly, exactly.
But we don't own it outright. We only have a.
We have slivers of any right-of-way.
In perpetuity?
That will end up ultimately going back to Caltrans.
Okay.
So that will get reverted to Caltrans.
All right. Yeah, I, I just think that, that was always one of the problems is that would add three more parking spaces, I believe, which could be worthwhile.
Mark, go ahead and stay up there.
Yes.
Berry Street.
Yes.
Did you have a conversation with ACES?
I have not had a conversation with ACES as of now.
Okay.
But I will, I do need to circle back with them. Once I have, I, I don't have a contact. I just need to reach out to them.
He's in the back of the room.
Yeah. Let me chime in on that. Mr. Mullinery came in yesterday. Mark was off yesterday.
Oh, okay.
So he came in and, and, yeah, yeah, he came in yesterday, and, and we talked about it. Because with the original project design, as we were going west past Berry Street, if there were going to be plans for widening the throat into, into Berry Street, that we could accommodate that with, with whatever we're doing there.
Right.
For improvements. Given where we're, with this reduced scope of work that we're proposing, we would not be going as far as Berry Street with improvements. So that, the urgency to accommodate that isn't quite the same. The need is still there.
Right.
I think we all understand there's, there's a need there.
Yeah, because it's, at that throat area, it's one and a half car width.
Yes.
And as a person that comes out of there with a trailer myself and a truck, and coming on head-on, it, it's just become a, an interesting thing. And, you know, as I've talked to Paul, you know, numerous times on this, is that you have somebody coming out of there, their trucks coming in, and it's, it's an insane situation. So I'm just, I hope that we can even think of that, that, you know, fairly quick in the, in, in the future. Because it's, it's really something, it's a safety situation.
Right, right. You know, and also to, to widen that out and get the, the throat widened out so that his, the trucks that are coming in and out don't have to cross over completely to the other side of the road.
Right. No, I, I, I've stopped numerous times to let his trucks in as I'm coming to work, and, and nobody else will. It's kind of funny.
Yeah, and, and he, in our discussion yesterday, he indicated that, you know, he's, he's aware of, you know, what we're talking about, and, and is certainly willing to work with us to, to make those accommodations, you know, as we see fit.
Okay.
But again, with, with the reduced scope in the project, we're not quite going, we're not going that far.
No, I, and I understand that, you know, and I'm not asking for, you know, I, for me personally, I would rather have that throat opened up than three parking spots sitting in front of the town hall. You know, that's just a, I mean, I understand it's, you know, it's an important thing to get some, some more parking in, in Pine Grove, but that's just a, you know, that's a safety that happens every day. So, or when you guys are open.
First, I know they talked, Mark, about the traffic flow was going to be a problem, like a bus, the lane width at Volcano Pioneer Road, and that most of the people want to turn left and go back up country. The traffic flow, there was talk there might be a pork chop or a median where they couldn't do that. Is that all?
I'm not sure where that came from. You mean the proposed.
Caltrans wrote it up when they were talking about it.
Well, if we were, this kind of goes into the discussion, you're talking about the egress out of the school. Yeah.
Is that, is that if no light was put in only?
No, I think if, if the light was put in, but the, there's no exit from the school out on the Pine Grove Volcano.
That would be removed.
Yeah.
The exit came straight on 88.
Yeah, so, right, what, what the project was, is, is really proposed is to have the egress come out onto the Pine Grove Volcano Road. And those buses and/or, or vehicles that need to go east and go uphill.
Can do that.
Can do that through the, the signalized intersection. If, you know, there was some discussion about, you know, whether that egress was a safe or a good idea or whatever, you know, can an egress continue to be accommodated on the highway as it is now? And that's been run past Caltrans again, and they do have a strong indication is if you have that egress, it would be a right turn out only.
And that wouldn't work at all.
And that wouldn't work at all for the school operations. You know, I had this discussion with the, the school district about two, three weeks ago. I sat down with their deputy superintendent there, and we, because I wanted to go over what was being proposed and such. And the school district has indicated the egress off of the Pine Grove Volcano Road is probably preferred than, than otherwise.
Speaking of school districts, speaking of school districts, have they offered to put any money in yet?
I.
Any money?
I couldn't answer that question.
Maybe the chair should ask.
Because, I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen any money come to the school district anywhere.
No money from the schools.
No, I.
Rich can answer that question. It's not like he's keeping the answer from you.
I was wondering about that.
I have not heard the, the school district offering up money.
What is the Caltrans reasoning for wanting a right turn only? Safety or what?
I, you know, I haven't, I didn't have the, the direct conversation with them. I, I believe what's, what's going on there is with the signalization of the intersection, if you have, there are two things going on. One is with the signalization of the intersection, you're going to have a backup of, of queuing cars that would back up past that exit point. And, and then you're going to have conflict with, with people wanting to turn left and go up country, that I can be able to get out, and/or would not be able to, to view, to have a clear view of traffic necessarily. That's, that would be coming up eastbound path through the intersection, or being able to see when, when the light turns green, all of a sudden you got cars coming up, and they're going to try to dart out there and, and, and try to make that left turn to go up country.
It makes more sense then to make them go right only and then have to go down and turn around?
Well, it makes sense to Caltrans, but it doesn't make sense for the, the user of the, of the, of the school property.
What you're saying, if, if the intersection, they go on the Pine Grove Volcano and they hit the intersection, that problem goes away. You just got, you just got the problem with ice, which it sounds like the school district is fine with, but it will be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they indicated, I said, you know, that you're proposed to have a fairly steep grade there, and, you know, I was told that, you know, that's, that wasn't a real concern for them. So.
How, did, did, did they, did they look at a roundabout for that area?
Probably, long time ago.
What were the reasons for not going in that direction?
Cost.
Was it the cost?
Um, you're, to have a roundabout, you're looking at a much larger footprint and acquisition of property. That whole property to the south, what, that whole lot, and also where the old bar used to be.
Okay.
Would. That would all go away.
We'd lose a concert hut? Oh, no.
That would, that.
And Mario's won't be able to park there, or whoever they are now.
That would end up requiring all of that property just to be able to funnel trucks because ultimately.
Right.
That is an STAA right-of-way or travelway, which means very large trucks. And to accommodate only a small number of people that would have to make that loop to come around, you would still, it wouldn't be cost-effective as a light would. So.
Okay. Because that would, that would solve a lot of problems too, and you wouldn't have to worry about the potential steep grade coming onto Pine Grove Volcano Road.
But at this point, way back when, during the conception of it, that was looked at, I have the drawings of it.
No.
And I believe that it just came down to cost is the, the largest issue.
Well, someone also said, I think our CAO, I'll blame him, but, drive the buses in, and then they go down, make a turnaround, and then come back out. That exit widen that, that entrance, the entrance part. So it's an entrance and exit.
I don't know if.
And then they can turn left there.
That, I don't know if there, the school could accommodate that in that short area.
Well, they might have to remove the community garden.
So, that hasn't been, as far as I understand, we haven't talked to the school about that or any of that. We do have a plan as of now. And that's where we have, we know what we already have, and that is coming out on there. We do, and I know, Rich, we've been talking to Caltrans. They prefer us one way. We haven't gotten a definitive yes or no. And so we can still poke at that to maybe get the left turn. Is that a pipe dream? Possibility. It, it, you know, we could be, it probably won't happen, but we still have to, I need to have a definitive no to come back to you guys, to let you say, yes, we tried, no, and we still have that.
The left turn?
Coming out of the, how it currently is.
Yeah, okay. But I thought they were pretty clear that they wouldn't permit.
They were clear, but we had, they would prefer a right only. Prefer, I can still work with and say, I wanted a definite no. Yes or no? If that's, to me, it's that simple.
Can we, can we ask them that?
We are still asking those questions.
Okay.
So.
How, you get a meeting together with, work with John, get, need to get a meeting together with the interim District 10 Director Grace Maggs Hale. She seems to, they seem to be supportive of this project, but to me, that kind of kills a portion of it if they're going to make people go right only. That, that creates.
More havoc.
Much more, much more safety concerns.
Right.
Well, that's only if they don't do the egress onto Pine Grove Volcano Road.
Correct. And the way, that's the way it's currently designed, is to have that egress on the Pine Grove Volcano Road. And in that case, there's no concerns with Caltrans with regards to the issues we're talking about. Because they're, we're eliminating the egress onto the highway.
So Plan A is try to get them to accept the left turn, you know, get a definitive no, and if no, then Plan B is this.
We already have it in play.
A 6.8.
Yes.
A million-dollar project. Okay.
So really, more than likely, your Plan B is what we're looking at. I mean, I think if you, if you had to put money on the table and say, which ways are going to go.
You're about as optimistic as me.
And that's, that's going out on the Pine Grove Volcano, turn left and go in the intersection and go in whatever direction you want.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have any idea ballpark issue, what it costs to put in the parking spots down by the hall, or to do the Berry Street encroachment, rough, just ballparky?
Well.
And while, while you're thinking about that, one thing I will say is I know there's been talk of, up in Pine Grove, they're going to build a new fire station. And they're looking at parcel, wherever they build it, I know the thought has come up, maybe if you overbuild a little bit, you have some more space for the fire department to do whatever in. And it might also function as a town hall with parking. Because that's really the, that problem of that town hall, where it is at now. Yeah, it's a historic building, I get it, but as far as usability, it's really compromised, just no parking. And the businesses don't like it. I think there's been at least one, if not two people hit trying to go across to that town hall. And other than buying somebody's house or their business, there's no way to get good parking for that Pine Grove Town Hall. You might get a few spaces, but nothing.
I think eventually, maybe the house would come on the market. I don't know. I mean, I think Sarah Tomo owns that, and he was pretty adamant about holding on to it, but you know how things change.
Yeah, but just the thought is maybe if we build that new fire station, it's going to have parking. It's going to have a, a lot of stuff there, and maybe you could say, hey, don't know what's with the old town hall, but here's a new town hall that would really function. So, but anyway, didn't have any thoughts on those numbers?
I couldn't.
Just a number.
It, it's hard to tell, because the thing is, you can't just do a little bit here and then a little bit there. It's going to have to have some connectivity, I think. And so.
That might kill that then.
I mean, as far as widening Berry Street, I mean, if, whenever Berry. I mean, as far as widening Berry Street, I mean, if, whenever Berry Street's widened, that can be done at that time. The, the idea of talking about it before is, is we were, if we were gonna do the improvements heading west onto the highway, past Berry Street and going down towards Ridge Road, let's accommodate a wider Berry Street opening, whether or not it's built yet. But at least accommodate the curb cut so that it accommodates a, a wider opening. Then you can always fit the road to that opening in the future when that comes up. If we're not moving forward in that direction with these improvements, then the Berry Street sits by itself. It's, it's a standalone proposition.
I don't support going, going west if it's gonna be the whole Mary Ann, you know, even, even to Berry Street. I mean, it's just, you're gonna break the bank. We're gonna have sidewalks to maintain. Um, yeah, I don't see that.
Well, it's also possible that, um, you know, the Civic Improvement Club got grants to do the sidewalks that are there. So why couldn't they, you know, do the rest that way in the future? So.
Okay.
You know.
Well, um, is there any members of the public that'd like to address the board?
Yes, there is.
Guys, don't say certain things that I'm waiting for. Hi, I'm Brenda Walker. And I didn't see anybody else being asked to sign this thing. So.
I thought you would have spoken in the Chamber Commerce ACT deal. I'm kind of, I was disappointed.
When I ask you to show the map, you, you will do that for me? Okay. So my name is Brenda Walker. I think most of you have met me at one point or another in life. I'm here today to encourage you to fund the State Route eighty-eight corridor project. Or at least move ahead on two things that are near and dear to my heart, which is the light at Pine Grove Volcano Road and the improvements of a crosswalk for the Pine Grove Town Hall. And here are the several reasons I have that this is essential. This was pointed out to me by one of the businessmen in Pine Grove that driving down from Hope Valley on Highway eighty-eight, there are no traffic signals until you have passed our town. That would explain why the length of the town often has people traveling in excess of thirty-five miles an hour. You might notice that, sir. It would also explain why slow-moving trucks carrying hay or cattle or logs often pass through the town with many cars behind them. Which leads into the need for the light to break up the flow of lines of traffic that hinder those of us wishing to turn right or left. You see, these impacts on Highway eighty-eight going west, often on Highway eighty-eight going east, the light at Ridge Road allows for entrance onto Highway eighty-eight from portions of Pine Grove. And the proposed light at Pine Grove Volcano Road will do the same thing. The breaking up of the flow of traffic would allow people to enter the highway at Taboo, the school exit, Pine Grove Volcano Road, Irish Town, Berry Street, along with all of our many businesses. The coffee shops, more than one, Smalley's, ACES, Volcano Telephone, Jackson Tires Business, that's in Pine Grove. The post office shopping center, two banks that we have, three gas stations, Pine Grove Market Shopping Area, four restaurants, Munderland's Ice Creamery, in case you haven't been there, you'd be a very rare person, Hoist House, Mount Zion Church, and the list I could make is longer. Yes, we are an unincorporated area, but we are also one of the densest areas in the county. So many of you have seen this map and I can give it to you personally if you'd like in a few seconds. If you look at that map, it's based, uh, was done during redistricting. It's based on population density, which means each colored area has the same number of people. That is not how our supervisory districts look, but nonetheless, that little purple area that's so tiny has the same population density, meaning same numbers of people in it as a long green strip or the brown strip or the blue strip or the kinda pinky purple one. Pine Grove is more than an unincorporated area. It's a heck of a lot of people that cross in those areas. That's why I'm sharing the map with you. There's a lot of people that would appreciate more control of traffic flows in this area. Additionally, a light at Pine Grove Volcano Road would be an asset as this road is considered a major fire evacuation route for those people in those outlying areas of Volcano and Shake Ridge as well as Pine Grove. Access to a traffic control light would give people access to Highway eighty-eight immediately in an emergency without waiting for the assistance of police. Without a traffic light, you can expect during an emergency to have a frozen in place line of cars trying to evacuate with no way getting out while waiting for law enforcement to arrive and monitor the situation. Please think about the Paradise Fire. Do you remember seeing the cars with fires around them? The second part of this request is a project that would be the improvement of the pedestrian crossing in front of the town hall. It is not uncommon at this time to have flashing yellow lights ignored by the drivers on the highway. Yes, one or two people, one of which I knew died there, and at least one person has been significantly injured there. In the past month, I personally have seen people crossing this area. There's about twenty that are people in my yoga class that go from town hall across the street where they park. I have seen people crossing, watched cars stopped, except for the one person who decided it was, oh, my God, there's a truck or they're stopped. And he screeched to a halt perpendicular on the highway. Yes, many residents can tell you have seen cars go to the center lane to pass cars stopped for pedestrians. Maybe a flashing red light might be a simple solution. A traffic light at Pine Grove Volcano Road and improvements on the crosswalk would be a small part of the project, but it would definitely benefit many county citizens. And according to my conversations with Mr. Gedney at A C T C and Ms. Devila. Which I know I just blew your last name again. I'm sorry, at Public Works, they have confirmed that this much can be done. Uh, thank you very much for your consideration of my request. And, um, I too don't like the one coming up Pine Grove Volcano Road, but it's better than not having a light. And I hope the secret idea that you're not explaining to them comes through. Because, Mr. Aneta, do you remember what?
I couldn't quite hear what you said there.
I said, I hope that the secret idea comes to fruition. Because they're not really explaining to you that left turn egress out of Pine Grove School.
The sequence?
The egress, the, the, the driving turn left. There's a possibility that they can get that through Caltrans.
Out of, directly out of the exit that it currently exists without doing the egress around the back.
To keep you from doing that.
Huh?
Without putting the meat in to keep you
Yeah, with, not putting anything there, just making it a safe zone to turn left. And it would be nice if, if the buses, when they came out, could trigger that light so that they could get out, make their left and go up country.
But the, okay, that doesn't make sense. So are you talking about Pine Grove Volcano Road? Right there in front of the school? See, you can't, I mean, you look at Ridge Road and
Can I make a suggestion?
What's that?
Use your imagination now for me. Come down eighty-eight and, and just as you come to eighty-eight and Highway forty-nine, what do you see near the sheriff's?
You would have to have a double light is what you're trying to say.
I'm not trying to say a double light, but I'm trying to, it could be a double light. What I'm trying to say is, do you remember when you get down eighty-eight and you're coming through Jackson and there's a sheriff's department here? Not the sheriff's, Jackson Police?
I understand.
What do they have beaten?
I understand there's a keep, a free zone, but the problem is if you have, as you perfectly said, a hay truck or anything else in there, and you try to make that left behind a hay truck, and you can't see what's coming up.
No, if you make that zone to the light.
You'd make a zone that's right there at the entrance, you'd have a hay truck at the light, you'd have a safe zone.
No, you're, I'm, you're, I'm at the other end of the, I'm at the, the place where the buses come out.
Come out?
Yes.
Are you talking about reversing the?
The buses come in through one.
Momentary lease, yeah.
Okay, and you know where they go out quite, quite quickly now. Make that a free space zone.
And you have a tr-
And a light that's controlling it.
You have a light that's controlling, but you have a truck sitting there at the light because you, you have a space?
To the light, it's all, not, no, nobody can stop.
Yeah, that's a little too much space. I, I see what you're saying, but
The stop line would be on the other side of the exit.
Be a little confusing for somebody that doesn't know that intersection.
So, so the exit plus all of Red Baron would be wide open.
Right.
So you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't see a hay truck park there.
You wouldn't? Yes, you would. To be honest, yes, you would.
I hope so.
Because that would be a very confusing intersection.
Maybe you should not make the left turn.
If they'd be, if they'd be willing to do that, that would save all the
Now I understand what you're saying. I, I apologize.
Okay, no, that's okay. If you understand that, that would really relieve Pine Grove Volcano Road from being a, a very worst
Well, actually, the, you know, the other option is reverse their entrance. You know, that would be, that would be the other thing.
Well, okay, explain to me how reversing it would be a better thing.
You'd be farther away from the intersection.
But you still have no control over the down, the coming from the e, going east. You need the light to provide them the entrance off.
Yeah.
The question is, is that better? Can that be achieved?
Okay, we've probably beat this to death, I think.
Or crest view.
Yes, we did.
Or crest view. Anyway, I, I, I applaud you for all the thinkings that you have there and that it is a tough decision, but please don't throw it away. I really am tired of coming nose to nose with traffic.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to read a letter that we all received, but it was from Cheyenne. Uh, I work and live in Pine Grove. My child goes to Pine Grove Elementary School daycare, uh, and daycare in Pine Grove. I'm emailing to ask you to consider to push the stoplight in the three-way intersection at eighty-eight Pine Grove Volcano Road. While sidewalks would be a wonderful addition to our little town, they aren't a priority for me at this time. The traffic at the intersection of Pine Grove is horrific. I witnessed near, um, many near accidents on a daily basis and I personally experienced them myself. People completely disregard the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit when children are present and they do not stop for the people trying to cross the highway. Please, for the safety of our children or our future, help us get this stoplight in place.
Any other members of the public?
I'd like to ask one more question. This is kind of a sideways. Paul, could you step up? It kinda sounds like I'm not gonna be able to put your intersection into the, this project because of, of all the, of the whole thing. But down the road, do you think your corporation would be in, uh, to donate part of your property there to allow Berry to widen?
Well, well, we purchased where the Dr. Wyrock's house used to be years ago with the specific intent to, um, potentially widen Berry Street.
Okay.
So that was, that, I mean, we wouldn't have to donate it, we would just do it.
Well, that's, that's even better. I like that.
But, and, and, and widening Berry Street wasn't, as I told Mr. Devila, um, yesterday, it wasn't contingent on the Pine Grove project.
Okay.
We, we expanded the tonnage for that, went through the planning process with the planning department, I think, last year. And, uh, we recognize that the egress is inadequate. It's, it's too narrow. So years ago, we purchased that house. We've since demolished the place. And, um, we'll, we're prepared to work with the county to do that, to get it
That would be awesome.
Regardless of the, what happens with the Pine Grove project.
Okay, well, I totally appreciate that and I, I appreciate ACES for going that direction. Because that, as a customer of yours coming out of there, scary as crap. Excuse the language.
I've had something scared out of me too from time to time.
Yes.
Can you change the name of the road to Jeff Brown Road?
No. Thank you, Paul.
Well, I guess probably have maybe, maybe some direction to staff. I mean, doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of interest in going west unless you could cherry pick an item or two and it sounds like we can't. Would you say that's a fair statement? Is that correct?
If we get it done, no, that's a problem.
Now, actually, I do have one more question for you, Mark. How long will Caltrans, since we've redlined a lot of this project, take to say, okay?
So it will take some review. It will take some back and forth with them to finalize everything and put it back out on the street.
Right.
But we're, we would be able to, if all goes well, because it's nothing that they haven't already seen other than some minor little changes that we're still trying to work through. We will have it back on the street to go to construction for next year.
Next year, not this building?
There's no way we're going to be able to get, hit this building this year.
Okay.
So it would be, again, repackaged. Everything would get, uh, all the blessings from Caltrans, things like that. We'd have it back out on the street to go come wintertime again.
So that's when people would be bidding on it.
Yes.
So we've redlined probably about two-thirds of this project, do you think?
A large, a, a, so all, most of the, well, how to quantify this?
Overall, if you look going, going way back, we've probably redlined eighty percent of it.
Yeah, most of the project has, if you go from where it initially was to where it is now. But again, the focus on being just the intersection and the hybrid beacon, I think would be beneficial. We can do it with what money we do have, even if we're also looking at, uh, the consultant went ahead and took the three lowest bids, which had a range from, um, nine million to eleven million dollars. Combined, took the average, so we got a better understanding of numbers. Some of the issues of the piping, things like that. If there's any, we can also end up still reducing some of that in areas.
Well, there shouldn't be as much undergrounding.
There isn't. There, there, there's still going to be some drainage that has to be done because of the intersection. But materials can change. That'll give us a little more cost savings, things like that.
Okay.
But overall, we wanted at least give you a ballpark of what we're looking at just right now. If we just move forward with everything as just those two items.
When do you think we'll go out for bid?
What, sir?
When do you think we'll go out for bid?
I'm hoping to have everything finalized and be able to put it out again by September, October. Um, if not, I won't say sooner because we just need to make sure that everybody is fine with what's going on.
I mean, what you have down in your, in your status update as far as, oh, you got the five bullet points improving the pedestrian crossing, signalizing eighty-eight volcano and sidewalk from north side of eighty-eight from Pine Grove Volcano to Pine Grove Elementary School. Standard eight-foot shoulders and twelve-foot lanes in eighty-eight west of Pine Grove to east of Pine Grove School. And constructing the one-lane outbound driveway, I mean, I could probably live with it. I don't, I, I think we should have never got into it, but that's water way under the bridge. Um, not your fault.
We're here, we're, we're here where we are now.
Yeah, and it's, I think that
Six point eight million, you figured?
That's, that's what the numbers, the, and the engineers' estimates will always end up being, trying to be conservative. When we put it out to bid, there were some unforeseen factors that kicked it up. We still don't know why it got kicked up to what it was. Potentially just for the fact that it's on a state highway and thinking that it was a Caltrans thing.
Does that cost estimate include percentage increases in materials and labor?
We try to capture that with this current, uh, cost analysis. So yes, I, I'm going to, to what degree, I can't give you that. But we're still within the parameters of what money we do have.
And is the assumption on the environmental that it's going to be fresh enough that it doesn't need to be updated?
Well, no matter what Caltrans is going to, we will still have to update it, but we won't have to go through it just a we won't have to go through, it's just a formality on their part where everybody says nothing has changed, other than we've now, the scope is still the same, fine, and it's just done. So, same way as the right-of-way search, everything will be, make sure that everything is still good. That'll get redone. And then put it out to bid.
One question. Can you maybe expand a little bit on the hybrid beacons? That's when you have like the lights at the side that will, that will basically flash?
Yes, yes. And that had always been part of the original plan. We even had to, when we downsized it, that, Caltrans was trying to throw that out, and it's like, no, 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 that had already, that was from the very beginning. We're still keeping that in there because it does provide a benefit. It does allow people to be seen, basically. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of public? Okay, thank you. Well, that's, that's it for that. No Zoomers. Moving down to item 5F.
Was this just an update, or are we giving direction to staff to move forward, or what?
Waiting for an answer, Galdry.
There was, there was no action, right, other than direction that was, as was given? We're proceeding?
Well, I, I'm in support of the 6.8 reduced scope of work option, Plan B, and then the A option if, if they can make that happen.
So yeah, so we're still waiting for input for, from Caltrans and.
Yeah, I didn't see anybody fighting the 6.8 million option. I mean. Okay.
That, that was the thing. We had, there was previous discussions about whether, you know, this group wanted to support the project and whatever. So I guess what I'm hearing is to keep proceeding in the direction that we're going forward with the reduced scope of project. I guess that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, and if you could get the town hall parking, that would be great, and Berry to widen. Means we have a wish list. See if you can get some money out of the schools.
I think that's above my pay grade.
Yeah, good luck in that one. Probably above my pay grade, too. Okay, well, thank you, Richard. Maybe we can get an earmark. With that, we're moving on to 5F Amador County Public Health's Nutrition Outreach Program. And thank you for being so patient. You guys have been so patient today.
I wanted to add that my father is Olson Novaki. I'm Sylvia Novaki.
Oh, hi.
Yeah, so hi. Yeah, so I, my siblings and I inherited that business, so that is an ongoing issue. I see people, I live in Pine Grove, and I see people parked right there all along the highway, in front of the town hall, so that's an issue. So I, on my father's behalf, would like to, you know, support the improved Highway 88 corridor improvements, and I know he wanted the parking, additional parking and that crosswalk, you know, improvement.
Your father was a nice, he was a nice man. Great guy.
Anyway, but you're first. So we're here, yeah. We're here with Amador County Public Health Nutrition Program, and I'm Sylvia Novaki.
And I'm Christian Tucker, and we're.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you could maybe switch my, my.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, members of the board, for hearing our presentation today. We're happy to do it, and we'll try to be quick. My name's Christian Tucker, and this is Sylvia Novaki. And next slide, please. Thank you very much. So we're here to talk about our nutrition program at Amador County Public Health. It is called SNAP Ed, which stands for Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Education. So it's basically education that is intended to go towards people who receive EBT benefits or who qualify for SNAP benefits. So it's 100% grant-funded from the SDA or USDA through the California Department of Public Health to every county public health department. And our current grant term goes through 2026. Next slide, please. So as you see from this kind of snapshot, all these, this collage of photos, the program is intended to reach a diverse group of people, all ages, throughout the whole county, through encouraging and educating people to eat healthier, to be more physically active, and to have good social connections as well. Next slide, please.
Is this working or not? Does this work? Yeah, there you go. So as an outreach worker, I go to the schools. That's mainly my, 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 my job doing the outreach. And I am currently at four state preschools. And over there, you see my picture with my coworker, Becca. We are at Pioneer State Preschool. And our nutrition education program provides teachers and staff with the training and resources to provide ongoing nutrition education and physical activity with their students. Each lesson is about 30 to 45 minutes in length, and usually I bring a taste testing sample of either fruits and vegetables that maybe the students aren't exposed to at home. So it gives them a chance to try it. And also, I bring nutritious recipes for them to try as well, and provide parent, parent handouts of those recipes. So, and next slide, please. And also, part of our program is we promote gardening education and provide assistance with any, with the building and maintaining of garden beds at the schools. And you can see the kids here, they love getting involved with the gardening and the planting and the mulching and the pulling weeds. And also, evidences show that if they're, you know, involved with the gardening, they're more inclined to try the fruit and vegetable. So they're very excited for this upcoming season. We'll be actually even starting some new garden beds at two different school sites, so we're excited about that. We provide the tools and the seeds and the plants and the soil, even drip systems and timers with the school. So it's a great program. Next slide. This is just a sample. Did you mention it's National Nutrition Month? I'm not sure if you did.
I did not. It is. That's March.
It is National Nutrition Month, and that month, and we are here. And it's also today, March 26th, is National Spinach Day. So for March, I, the focus was on spinach and all the health benefits from spinach. And I usually send out this newsletter every month to teachers, and it just outlines the planned activities for the month. And usually, with the preschoolers, I vary it because the age range is preschool all the way up to second grade. So the second graders don't often like some of the younger stories that I read, so, and, and the songs and the games. So, but anyway, so this goes out, and they are also, the newsletters are also included in our community announcements. And most recently, the school district has been including my newsletter in their community announcements.
I thought you had something on Popeye there.
Oh, Popeye. I thought about Popeye and spinach, but because he smokes a pipe, we decided our track program was probably not.
Public health, so.
Yeah, we are public health. But yeah, I, I did mention to the students that I grew up on watching Popeye and made him stronger.
Popeye would have been good.
Yeah, so, yeah, I do say that.
You didn't change my mind. I still don't like spinach.
But actually, this month, you would have liked my smoothie. So I brought smoothies for the, for the students to try, and they loved it. So they didn't even know that it had spinach in it, because by the time I added all the other fruits, and it didn't even look green. But it is called the Green Smoothie, and we talked about all the health benefits of spinach. So, yeah. Next slide.
Yeah, so this is a little bit about our community outreach. So not only are we targeting, you know, the low, more low-income schools that qualify under our program, but we're also trying to reach out throughout the whole community. So we're at community fairs. We got Celebrate Our Children coming up Saturday, April 27th, at Oregon High School, and we will be there. We do some kind of cool gardening activities. As you'll see, that middle picture there is a little blow-up pool, and then we put soil in there, dump trucks. And then we also let the kids plant a seed in a compostable pot that they get to take home and plant at home for, to start a garden at home. And on the right, you'll see, we did a little collaboration project with some other programs. Last year, the World No Tobacco Day theme was grow food, not tobacco. So we kind of worked with them to do that, a little window display at the, at the fair. Next slide, please. And here's some more examples of how we are partnering with other public health programs. For example, the, the home kits that Sylvia does, the packets that can get sent home with parents. We include information on tobacco cessation, help keep people quit tobacco or vaping or chewing, all that kind of stuff, so that they know what resources they have. And then also on the right, you'll see, we partnered with our Lead Poisoning Prevention Program. Whenever we get information or recalls, as you'll see, that's an applesauce packet that was widely available, had high amounts of lead in it, so it was recalled. And it was still in the stores here, so we included information on our social media and also to take home, so that parents can be advised about it.
Did they find out how that lead got into there?
We, we don't. I know at a lot of the factories, they use the same equipment that they use for other processes. And a lot of times, it's, they don't insure that it. So sometimes they don't know how much of it has lead, but if there's a, if they find something, they'll often recall all of it. So.
I thought on this, they might have almost, I thought somewhere kind of almost alleged it might have been like a nefarious activity by some person, possibly.
It, it could have been. We, we see a lot of these recalls. So this is just one example. I mean, last year alone, I think I saw five, seven of these. Next slide, please.
And this past October, we had our first Annual Public Health Together We Can Fair. We're pictured there with the staff. A few staff are missing from that photo. But, so our event was to promote health in the community, and we were partnering, we partnered with a lot of other community agencies. We had a lot of, I think we had a good turnout. We're hoping for more this coming year. And that was my booth that I had for the Cowfish Healthy Living. So people would come through. We'd have recipes and cookbooks for them and just health tips for them. So, next slide, please. And over here, we had our Infused Water Bar. I don't know if you all are familiar with that, but it, it's a rethink your drink campaign, so that it's a healthy alternative to sugary drinks. So you had like melon water and citrus water, and then people would come pick up the recipes, they could try the water and take home the recipe to try at home. And then over there on the right, we had our bike rodeo, which we had like bike safety stations, and that was our local, one of the local fire departments that assisted us with that. And we gave away some free bike helmets as well, and even had a raffle for bikes. So we had a good turnout. Next slide, please.
Yeah, and this slide here shows some of the other stuff we had at that event. There you'll see our local Becca Cribs from Public Health sang a few songs with her brother. We had the Interfaith Food Bank president to give boxed lunches to families who had a need for food. We had the Commission on Aging, some other agencies like WIC, all kinds of community partners there. We even had a mammogram van that people could go get free mammograms. So that was offered through HealthNet, one of the managed care plans in the county, which was a pretty cool partnership to have. Next slide.
So when school's out, I will be, I was, I had the opportunity to attend a conference back in October, and I learned about this Bingo Size program for seniors. It's a 10-week evidence-based health promotion program through our SNAP Ed, and it combines bingo with exercise and nutrition. So we're partnering with the Senior Center, and hopefully we'll get that up and running in June. And we will be actually paying for the cost of the training for one of the, for the center coordinator at the Senior Center, so she'll be attending the training with me. And, yeah, we're excited to get, it's a great way to get seniors moving and socializing, learning about nutrition. And it promotes, it's even proven to reduce falls in the elderly. So, and I think they're excited about it, because, you know, Kelly Marshall, the Senior Center, asked around if the seniors would like to participate in Bingo Size, and they're looking forward to it. They said as long as it's not in the morning, they will attend. So, yeah.
Yeah, and we do a lot of stuff at the preschool, so we thought, why not, you know, work with the seniors, too? We got to work with all ages here.
Yeah, it's a great partnership for the Senior Center, so we're looking forward to that. So.
All right, well, that's it for us. I would like to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to our presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Well done.
I would love to hear the outcome of your Bingo Size, you know, because something that we could bring over to Accra or anything else would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Yes, we look forward to coming back and sharing about it. So.
All right.
Thank you.
You know, you do the, the gardening, which I think is great with kids. They do like to participate. Might want to think about doing some bulb planting in the future. I did that with my grandkids, and they really enjoy watching the bulbs, flowers come up in the springtime.
Do you have to wait until the next year?
That's right.
Plant a cherry plum tree there. Really good for Packer rockets as a kid.
Great, awesome, yeah.
Oh, they're wonderful. I mean, you got all kinds of ammo. Teaching patience.
Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my parents celebrated children a lot. We, we celebrated, we packed wood. We celebrated, we packed ashes from the wood. We celebrated my fixing fence, all kinds of celebrations we had. And let's see, Mr. Creers wanted to get going here, so I don't blame him.
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone on Zoom.
Oh, I missed him. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker, whenever you're ready.
Yes, this is just for the folks who are just speaking, that there are some USDA grants and such that are centered around public, private, small gardens and things like that, that if they aren't aware, might be able to help with some of the things that they're doing with the, the gardens at schools and the like. So. Just a comment that there, there may be some federal money out there to help doing the kind of things that they're doing.
Thank you very much for sharing that. We are kind of new at going to all of the schools, so we're kind of ramping up here. We're looking at all kinds of different grant options. As you know, the program we have is 100% grant-funded. So, you know, we're looking at how we can expand more, of course. So thank you for the suggestion.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, moving on. Next item is 5G. This administrative agency, it's a sales tax for roads. Something supervisor action I've been discussing for quite some time, Frank. Can I get you to talk about that, Frank?
I can. Well, this kind of started, it's probably been over four years now before COVID. And all of the cities in the county got together, and we were close, and then COVID hit, so we kind of put it on the back burner, because we didn't know what was going to happen. And so we came back to that, and we got the cities together, and some of the cities decided they wanted to do their own thing. In fact, Amador City did just that and passed a, actually a special tax. And their, their feeling was is that they could get additional funding from SB1 because of the, you know, having a special tax status. The, it was a quarter cent sales tax, so it's not going to generate much in their city limits, but they're hoping that, they were looking at, I think, a city along the coast that benefited from that. And anyhow, by, by the very fact that they have kind of opted out and gone their own way, we can't go as a county collectively. So we can go independently. It's probably for the best. I think other cities want to run their own measure. And again, I, you know, I think that, you know, there's just a lack of complete funding. You know, the study from 2015 indicated we'd need roughly 6 million annually. I, I don't think SB1 is providing anything close to that. I did an estimate based on the proceeds from Measure M, which is a half-cent sales tax. If we ran a half-cent sales tax measure countywide, SB1, Measure M is generating about 4.3 million. So how do, how do you attribute what would be collected in the county? We use the Bradley Burns Tax Data for all of the, the cities. This is a one-cent sales tax. And so we were able to get the percentages that correspond to each jurisdiction, and the county is about 62%. That's pretty close to the population of the county, roughly, you know, from a percentage point of view. So that, you know, makes sense. And if you then multiply that by the Measure M, you're, you're getting roughly 2.7 million annually, which is, you know, pretty good, actually. That goes a long way. I think SB1 is about 2 million, so we're close to 5 million. That's better than. I think SB1 is about 2 million, so we're close to 5 million. That's better than, um, you know, what we're just getting with SB1 alone, and over 10 years, that'd be about 27 million. Um, other things to consider would be a, you know, whether we want to have a special tax, that's a two-thirds majority. There is additional funding one could, could get from SB1, but it's much harder threshold. A general tax only requires a, a simple majority. In addition, we may want to have an oversight committee, or certainly some kind of rules, or at least an annual report of what's being done with the funding to maintain some kind of transparency and, um... So there's also gonna be need for education informing the public if we run a measure like this, so the chamber might be that vehicle for that. Um, in discussions with Chairman Anetto and myself, we, we recommend the half cent sales tax, um, run it as a, a general tax, so a simple majority. It would be sunsetted at 10 years, so that it would expire. It would only be in the unincorporated area. Those are the voters that would be able to vote for it, and, um, you know, the, we would direct these funds toward fixing roads in the county. I, I thought maybe we should focus on key roads, key collector roads, at least with this funding. We still have the SB1 funding for other road projects, and, you know, that's, that's kind of it. I, I didn't put too much into this. I, I kind of came up with some roads that are major roads in the five districts. I think that that might be good, that if it's split up. This is by no means comprehensive. You know, these are probably some of the roads that probably are used the most and probably need some love to begin with, or at least some repaving or digouts or whatever, so that's kind of it in a nutshell. I think we, we can change anything we want. Nothing's set in stone here, so.
I would want, I would want to add some roads to your list. I, I know just a couple in my area that are horrible right now, or Comanche Parkway and, and, uh, Comanche Road. And as far as the citizens oversight committee, I think your oversight committee is right here with the Board of Supervisors, taking citizen input, and I think annual report is a good idea.
And just, I think, Frank, that the maintenance of effort is what, 800,000 we put in? So it had almost doubled, 2.1 in eight, and so you'd get pretty close to that $6 million mark.
Yeah, but that was 2015, and then we had the-
Well, I realize that.
The great inflation, or the great gouging, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think also, I don't remember when, but SB1, I think it sunsets, what, four or five years down the road?
Yep.
Does it?
I thought it did.
I don't think it does. It'll, conceivably, it'll sunset when they do a pay per mile tax.
I don't know why I thought it had a sunset on it.
Well, it may eventually go away, I believe that, but it, it probably will be replaced with something else, because right now, uh, people are moving toward electric cars. They're probably gonna probably buy less fuel, so that's gonna dwindle, that's already having an impact on the funds that it's raising, and-
It is, yeah.
You know.
I think overall, you laid it out pretty well, Frank. I mean, you know, it's, I've been doing this, like I told people, it's, I'm going 17 years. Um, it's pretty obvious that, you know, you're not gonna be able to pinch enough money here, not gonna get enough funding there, um, what needs to be done to our roads. And I've told some people, you know, not saying I did everything right, if I had, not saying I did. I made some mistakes along the way. I, board members before me made some mistakes along the ways. If we'd done everything right, we'd still have a, a major problem in our roads. Um, and it's pretty obvious, the feds and the state, they're not gonna give us enough money to fix roads. It may help a little here or there, but it's something, we're either gonna do it, or as Mr. Ely said a couple times, we may have some roads go to gravel. Um, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be boo, but just, it's probably the truth, especially some of the smaller roads. So, yeah, um, I'm supportive of doing a step like this. I mean, we could probably talk more about what roads, you know, as far as the general framework, how to do it, but roughly, I think, is, um, it makes sense to me. Not that I like it, but I don't really see a good alternative.
And just to confirm, SB1 does not have a sunset?
Doesn't, okay.
If I could jump in, I, I do want to say, I think there is a potential issue with, um, presenting this as a general tax and then saying that you'll use it for roads, that will turn it into a special tax.
Yeah.
So...
You can't have a, what they call a, a general tax masquerading as a special tax, so you get the benefit of saying what you'll spend it on, but get the lower threshold. The courts will apply, treat it as a special tax.
Can we say it's a general tax and that list, a list of things we would spend it on?
That's also a special tax. You, you have to, the ones that I've seen that are, that have a list, um, that are, I mean, I, I haven't done a ton of research on this, um, but there can be lists and then say, and other, um, important public services. You know, there's gotta be a-
Can that be a real small print?
There's gotta be an open-ended, otherwise, even if you have a list of six things, that's a special tax, because, I mean-
So could we have, so could we say, hey, main priority is roads, and other priorities also, and name some roads?
You know, the, I think the best example of, of what we've done to, to sort of try to get around this is, I think it was the TOT where we said, um, you know, this is a general tax, this can be spent on anything, but the priority will, you know-
Yeah.
Has been in the past, X, Y, and Z. Uh, uh, you know, the further you go with sort of telling voters that it's only gonna be spent on one, one or even a few things, it turns it into a special tax. And, and we'll need to do more research, but I just want to raise that as an issue.
Okay. We also probably need to know when the drop dead date is for putting it on the ballot, so that-
For no, for next November?
Or this November.
This, this November, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I think that's what we want to try.
And is it, so we're limited that we can't campaign for it?
What, as a, as a, as a county, what you can't do is use any public resources to advocate for the tax.
We could individually.
You can individually. You can put out factual information, the, the, the funding you have, the, the, the state of the roads, things like, factual information is fine, but the, when your factual information turns into advocacy, that's, that's where you cross the line. Using public funds, if you show up as a supervisor at a, at a, you know, a meeting and advocate for it, you can do that, but, and the board can adopt a, you know, endorse it, um, but you can't go beyond that and start putting out flyers, advocate, yeah, vote yes on.
Okay. And I, I think, you know, if we did something like this, I think what is in there, I think would be critical, critical to me as a voter, just as an individual. I think a lot of people's having, having that sunset, um, so he's waiting to get down the road, and if we, if the voters say, hey, we don't like that, uh, they can say, no, it's done.
Yeah.
That's important.
They had that on the Wild and Scenic.
Well, I agree. We tried. Let's see, no Zoomers, any members of the public?
We were saving it for this.
Like to comment on this?
Hi, again, it's Brenda.
Do you want to pull the mic down again, Brenda?
There we go.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, message from me to you is that having read tons and tons of grouchy people on Nextdoor Neighbor about the roads, please explain to them how roads are funded, because in their minds, the state of California has given them no money to fix their roads. Got it? They don't realize that you guys are underfunded by the fact that we have no taxes on four roads.
No, you kind of lost me. You said the state of California has given them no money to fix their roads?
They have the, your general population sees road maintenance as number one in their life, yes, but they don't understand that you don't have the money to fix-
Oh, that's true.
-the roads, okay? They think it's the state of California that isn't giving them a fair shake. So if you want to pass this, you have to have a good storyline that says, hey, the state, Amador County needs this. Okay, so I've lived here since 74, married to a logger. Up until 90, you got four service monies for logging that went to schools and roads, right? When it disintegrated, you no longer got road extra money. So mid 90s to now, you have lost a funding source that was there. You need money. I would say to you, please, don't, um, don't give the public an idea that, I'm sorry, Frank, only these special roads are gonna get addressed. I, for one, know that, I don't know the name. Public Works isn't here. Okay, there's a special list of roads and their maintenance number. 100 being you're doing really great, 9 meaning not so hot. Okay, you need to know how many of us live on roads that are like nine, I think I'm a four, that haven't seen maintenance since 1965.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you're gonna do this, please do it with the understanding that this department, Public Works, needs a lot of money to make a lot of people feel a lot better. So-
That's, that's why we're doing this, is we understand that.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, if you say, I'm only gonna do it for Ridge Road or some other road that somebody told me once upon a time, this was a really important road, because it's on the major thoroughfare for this county to get to La Trobe. I won't name which supervisor said that. Um, I want you to know that that's nice, it's a major thoroughfare, but my number four roads still sucks.
Right.
In fact, at Christmas time, I did, I, when it's snowing, I'm wondering when you guys are gonna come out and shovel it.
Well, we still get the SB1 money, so that could be used for the other roads. I mean, that was, that was the intent, but I-
Are you here?
Maybe, maybe you're right, you know.
I think Ms. Jono here's enough complaints about roads too. I think you all do. But the roads need improvements, yes. Please do this, yes. Please don't do it without understanding your population, which is all of us.
I agree.
Who, uh, would like better roads, especially those of us who haven't seen any maintenance in years. Am I making some, you know, there, there is a list, and I don't know what the famous name is, I wish Mr. Vila was here. There's a listing of roads and their qualities that was done around-
Payment condition.
Payment index.
Payment condition or index.
Yeah, that gives you an idea, and if it hasn't been updated since 15, then you don't-
Well, it's, it's still in the database, and I, I think it, um, it updates the condition based on just time.
I, I, all I know, I know when it was done. I know what I was then, and I know what I still am.
And I hear what you're saying, Brenda, but I think also, or Ms. Walker, um, something else is kind of like, like your body. Okay, we may have peripheral problems in our arteries or whatever, i.e. smaller roads, we're still going. Now, you have your main arteries get blocked, um, you're gonna fall, you're, we're laying in the floor.
I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, Brian, but what I'm saying is, the population you want to vote doesn't need to hear that you're not gonna fix their roads.
Well, one thing, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lie to them, but-
That's right.
One, one thing I will, I can say is this, if our major roads are in better shape, the, the road crew will have more ability to go out on smaller roads and do some maintenance. But if they're out there trying to keep the major roads passable, they're not doing as much maintenance on the small roads.
Well, we would, but we would both agree that they don't have enough crew either, and that's an important thing, so having the men-
Yeah, I wish the Chamber of Commerce had helped me out there a little bit, and that-
I, I almost did, you know?
You should have.
I, I'm sorry, but I almost did. You need men who are out there looking at it.
People.
You need eyes. I, and I, you know what I forgot to do? Thank you. Whoever had the grant that sends around the county crews to cut down all the shrubberies and the trees on the county roads that had fired-
That'd be the Fire Safe Council.
The Fire Safe Council, thank them, and thank the crews that are, are your crews that are out doing it.
No, they, they done, just, the Fire Safe Council's done phenomenal work, and the contractors, they got it, and I do that type of work. They've done a really good job.
Well, the guys that were doing it in my neighborhood told me they were county, so.
I'm trying to get a word in edgewise to you.
Yeah, go ahead.
On part of the information you're looking at, it might be titled incorrectly, but seven I on the consent agenda is Amador County Maintain Mileage List.
Maintain Mileage List, yeah. At any rate, it's the one that tells you how damaged we are, and some roads actually get, may get more, because they're, the roads that are already gravel, they get cleaned once in a while.
Once a road starts deteriorating, then it, it kind of accelerates its deterioration.
Well, no, there are some that were always gravel roads.
It might be pavement condition index, but I know that's what you're talking about. They went through and checked them, yeah.
Thank you for putting up with me. I think I'll leave pretty soon.
Well, thank you. Thanks for speaking.
Actually, I'll go see the school district.
Looks like we have a Zoomer?
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker, when you're ready.
Yeah, I think the, just going back through notes and such from when I was meeting with people during the campaign, it was, the study she was referring to was in 2015, was the Pavement Management Program, um, study, and the presentation I got from Mr. Vila, uh, went through a bunch of details on that, uh, in the, I don't know if the date on it, but it was, uh, the fiscal year 2, 2023 to 2024 budget that I think he made for the Board of Supervisors. Uh, but that, that study with, in terms of the model showing the road, the, the PCI was done in 2015, and then it projects out using a model what the, the condition falls at ea- each year if it's not maintained. So it's got the projections out to 2035 in there. Anyway, that's it. She was referencing the study and couldn't remember what the name of it was, so I happened to have it in my bag. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment on this issue? Up seeing none.
Put the wheels in motion, Frank.
Okay, we'll continue on.
Yeah.
All right.
Richard, you okay with going forward on it?
We need, we need staff to clarify some of the issues. We need to know the drop dead date, and I, I think we need to know that the chamber, somebody's gonna get behind it first, otherwise we're dead in the water before we even start going.
I think the chamber will.
You know, we had the Amador Business Council that said they were going to get behind it last time, and they dropped, they dropped off the face of the earth.
I, I'll just, Paul Malinelli Jr., I'm, I'm a member of the chamber board, and I'm 100% positive the chamber would be willing to take this up and get it passed.
Remember that one?
No doubt about that.
Well, thank you.
If we increase their funding, maybe.
Well, no. We don't cut it.
Jack Mitchell, uh, I would just confer with, uh, what Paul said. I've talked to a number of, I've talked to a number of folks, uh, at the chamber, as well as other groups and organizations. Some of them that come here and might be yelling at you from time to time for different things you're on, and it's amazing to me, the number of people that are actually ready to do something for their roads, meaning willing to pay a little tax to get something done, uh, and it's widespread, for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
So is that kind of what you heard when you out campaigning, talking to people, was?
Yes, yes, clearly.
Thank you. Any other members of public? Yeah, I think, up, yeah, Mr. Parker.
Go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Just second what Jack said there, but expand on it in terms of the, the other piece of that, that a lot of the folks I was talking to, whether it be for roads or water or other types of infrastructure, is they- is they really do want to see, um, feedback and communication on how those funds actually get spent so that they are seeing that the, that the things that they are concerned about are getting addressed and where in the queue they are. There were a number of comments I got from folks where, you know, there'd been assessments or taxes or things for, you know, what they thought were fairly specific set of items that they then never saw anything happen on or have any, you know, of, you know, accountability on where those monies got spent. What, that, that being their perception, I'm not saying anything about what the reality was because I wasn't looking at the, at that then, but, uh, uh, there definitely is a willingness in the community to support um, putting more money towards these types of projects, but there's also a, a hunger for making sure that they get feedback on how those monies are spent. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
So it, it looks like July nineteenth might be the, the deadline. Probably not one of, July nineteenth. I don't know, what's the board?
Ask a question, Frank, why, why this committee settled originally on a half cent and set up three quarters cent possibly?
So the, unless we did a special meeting, it would, we'd be looking at the Ju- July ninth meeting.
Okay.
At the latest.
You know. Uh, to answer your question, I think it was, uh, we were just comfortable with Measure M being a half cent. We had, you know, data on that, and we also felt that, you know, that was something the, um, community was probably comfortable with, you know, they're not going to, no one's going to be happy about this, but, you know, it's, uh, we, we felt like maybe it was going too far, but that's something we can put out there. I mean, I, I'm not a, I'm not opposed to it if you think we can.
If you're going to vote on a tax, a tax is a tax, and what I'd like is to, it's going to be dedicated to roads, have enough money to really make an impact. Half, half cent, yes, it'll raise quite a bit of money, but we need, according to the old study, six million dollars a year, it's probably more than that now. We're not going to get there with a half cent.
Well, I can run the numbers with three quarters of a cent, and then we can also, you know, that's something to consider. You know, thanks for bringing that up.
You know, I think maybe part of our thought process too is, what would be, I, I think you're right, Richard, it probably needs more money, there's no doubt about that. But what's, what's palatable to the people, the gen- the public, you know, we're, and I think there is, there's also a thing out there too where, hey, I mean, times are getting harder. I mean, people are, people are feeling more of a pinch, I mean, yeah, you go, you go, it's like, it used to be, yeah, you didn't think too much about going and getting a hamburger, now it's like, man, a hamburger is like, you know, depending where you go, uh, ten to eighteen bucks for just, you know, a hamburger. Um, so there's, there's that too, it's like, uh, what are people comfortable with?
It should be floated.
Pardon?
It should be floated, and if it goes down, fine, but I get it, but I'm paying, uh, three quarters of a cent on sales tax, I would rather pay three quarters of a cent going to roads. I mean, at least you see something, something come, uh, with that three quarters of a cent if it goes into our highways.
No, I, I think, I think, you know, Greg is saying we can't dedicate it, but the, the, it could, we have language that says, basic, hey, kind of, this is what we're really looking at. And I think one nice thing about a sales tax is people that travel through using our roads, um, they would be paying, um, paying, helping out.
Yeah, that would be one of the benefits, as tourists would pay the tax, this tax stays local, it'll reduce, potentially reduce wear and tear on cars.
And I, I think it's something, I mean, for lack of a better term, doing our job, I think we need to float it because the roads are important, and I, I don't see, unless you absolutely gut all the rest of services in the county, which you can't do, there's no, there's no way to get enough money for those roads, I mean, there's not, period.
You're going to vote against the half cent sales tax, you're going to vote against the three quarters cent sales tax too.
Right, that's true.
Hmm, yeah, possibly. Well, I think we're probably good, I think we have direction to continue forward and.
Okay, half cent, three quarters. Three quarters, half.
I'm not going to be on the board after December, but I'm tired of hearing people say how bad the roads are.
Well.
And a half cent will get us partway there.
That's, uh, I don't, I think you're, you're, you're right, that's true.
Well, Measure M has gone up, so a half cent sales tax will probably generate more. I think that's partly because we're getting the, um, you know, the online sales and prices have, have just kind of gone up too.
And, and you know, and I think that's, um, there's probably some truth to what you say, Richard, you tell people a half cent or a three quarter cent. A lot of people say, it's a tax, I'm not voting for it, or people say, hey, it's for the roads, I'll vote for it. So it may not make that much difference, which, but it'd probably make a lot of difference how much fun you get for roads, that it would.
Well, and maybe if you increase to three quarters, think about decreasing the sunset. Down from ten years to five or seven years.
Yeah, that, and that could be an option, I mean, yeah, I mean, I know as a, if I'm looking as a taxpayer, shorter term, you say, if you really, if it's a sour apple, you spit it out. The only, only bad thing is, the only thing I think could be a problem, if you go and fix a fair amount of roads that a fair amount of people drive on, the next time you come around, they may say, hey, my road's fine, why do I want to vote for that? I mean, just, and sometimes people are kind of like that, you know, it's, um, some, sometimes society can be very generous, sometimes it can be very, uh, very stingy. Well, we'll come back with maybe some more options, and go, go ahead. Members of public, all done there, moving on. Uh, this is fi- item five H, General Services. Talking about maybe trying to get some earmarks from the state. Federal, federal, actually federal government, really. Yeah. I was thinking state, it's federal, our senator going, going to feds.
Right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I'm Karen Warburton, um, Senior Administrative Analyst, GSA, General Services. I am here to talk to you today about, um, a very brief opportunity that we have to apply for some congressionally directed spending from, yes, the federal government, our senators. Senator Padilla has an opportunity for us to apply, and, um, it would allow us to, um, ask for these congressionally directed, uh, spending funds, or also known as earmarks. The due date is March twenty-ninth, so the end of this week. It's a pretty quick turnaround, but, um, I'm asking for your guidance about whether I should pursue this. If we decide to do it, maybe some guidance on what projects would be considered. And then also, uh, this is an ongoing process, and my understanding is around the beginning of the year, typically, they ask people to, um, you, you know, some of the, um, local governments to input in, information uh, into their systems so that they can then, um, advocate for us in the budget hearings. The, uh, process, I think, would behoove us to go over some, some potential projects to discuss or to input into the system, possibly on an annual basis around October or November. Uh, and that way, we would have a little bit more time to prepare documentation and put those in and have a good chance of getting those earmarks. So, uh, that's open for discussion?
But you still think that there's time this season, that there was a kind of a, the deadline was pushed back or pushed?
It, it was, yeah, it, normally, we would have to put, put in, uh, the information in January or February, but because we've had these delays uh, in, in Congress with the budget, it's pushed back to the twenty-ninth for Senator Padilla. He's the only one at this point that we have an opportunity to ask.
Okay.
So you're thinking, you know, you have your list here, are you thinking about all those, part of those?
We can, we can ask for as many or as few, uh, ideas as you want to. Uh, the only thing I would say is, we have to have some idea of what things are going to cost. And you notice in the, in the memo, I, I mentioned the District Attorney building exterior, and just keeping in mind that we have applied for this grant, and the way that it works apparently with the earmarks is that this is kind of an earmark, and we can ask for that through the senator, or we can apply for the grant. So we've kind of already done that for this year. Uh, but the other things are just sort of projects that have been identified to me, unless you have something else that you're aware of.
Of course, as you've been listening to this whole conversation, I think roads should be on the, then the higher side of everything, you know, then Amador Water Agency, and then the park, you know, so I'm good with all that.
Can we apply for all of these, or should we be more strategic in what we apply to only one?
I think, I think considering the turnaround time, um, you know, we might need to be strategic and maybe submit only one project this time around. Um, uh, and then maybe we can talk about how best to, you know, strateg- strategize on projects for the future.
Well, I, I definitely, based on what I've heard, um, water, water treatment facilities, I think is, is a.
I think they have a pretty good handle on the cost, too, you wouldn't have to research that very much.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think prioritization, I agree with Frank, and probably supporting, uh, Amador Water Agency and their project is a good fit for this.
Absolutely.
I won't, I won't disagree, I mean, I, I do like roads, but it's, um.
No. Really?
Well, yeah.
Just need to get Larry to bring it down to less than a hundred million, so.
John Hopkins, General Services Director, Larry McKenney is here, so he can talk to you about that.
Right behind you.
Did you sneak up on me?
Snuck up chairs.
Well, they, I know they have some short-term things they want to do, so maybe we could focus on those.
Tanner plant.
So, good afternoon, supervisors, Chairman Bryan, no lunch today, huh?
It's waiting back there.
Oh, is it? Somebody's probably eaten it already. Uh, Rich Farrington, I am the President of the Amador Water Agency Board this year. The General Plan Annual Progress Report you considered today has policies on water. The staff comment on future water supply program P three, page fifty-four, about our limited water connections is accurate. The comment is, Amador Water Agency is currently at capacity for new connections and wastewater disposal. An example of this is our recent board declaration of a treated water shortage in the Ione area where we're at maximum capacity for treating drinking water. Our limits are having a drag on economic and community development. The comment also says that you propose to expand AWI's capacity for the Wicklow, Wicklow Way Project, which is served by the Tanner Water Treatment Plant. The housing work group, when it gets started, could help us in identifying short and long-term water needs in the county. General Plan Program F two, Future Water and Funding, says the county will identify and pursue alternative water, uh, funding sources for projects. We need help getting grants for rehabilitating two of our six water treatment plants at Tanner and Ione. While there have been some maintenance on these plants, both are over fifty years old and beyond their original design lives. Tanner serves four of the cities of Jackson, Sutter Creek, Plymouth, Amador City, and Drytown as well. It was used when it was brought here in the eighties, that's the Tanner plant. To address the Ione Water Treatment, uh, Plant Capacity Issue, we are planning to sell revenue bonds in the next few months to get nineteen million, uh, needed for some of the highest priority rehab projects. This is the fastest way we can get funds for the rehab work. We would appreciate your help in getting grants like federal or state earmarks, CDBG, or other grants. Grants help keep costs down in water bills, customer water bills, because they don't have to be paid back. Yep. I'll try to answer any questions if you have any.
You got a cost analysis for fixing Tanner, or you got a short, if I remember, there's the five-year plan and the twenty-year plan at Tanner?
There is.
Or something like that.
Um, Larry McKenney, General Manager. Um, I think we've, we've talked to all or most of you about our issues with the Tanner Plant and the Ione Plant in particular. We have a series of projects that are identified in a longer range, uh, Capital Improvements Plan that includes growth impacts, that it's too much to afford all at once, and so we're trying to do that in increments, and we do have our top priority projects that are in our five-year CIP, which my board reapproves, revises and reapproves every January. Um, and we've been using the costs from our Water Master Plan Study that was finished in twenty twenty-one. We've been escalating those costs with the, the Engineering Index for Inflation, so we think we have a pretty good idea of those. Because of the emergency declaration that we have in Ione, and because of the really constrained capacity we have even in the Tanner Plant, the, my board has approved a strategy for trying to finance these that puts the Ione Treatment Plants first, and that's the target for the bond issuance. The bond issuance that we're contemplating is aimed at the next three projects in line to try to improve capacity at the Ione Treatment Plant. According to our financial model, it's also pretty much our bonding capacity in the near term, unless we do something else that generates more revenue or something like that. So then, we have projects, a couple of projects for the Tanner Plant that would help us to avoid having an emergency declaration there, and we're trying to figure out how to fund those, and we're looking at programs like the State Revolving Fund, uh, as a source of low-interest loans or forgivable grants, or, uh, principal forgiveness loans or grants. The, the issue here is that when we have an opportunity like doing a, um, an earmark request, which for the kind of projects that we're doing, earmarks money that comes into the State Revolving Fund program, so we have to work with both the legislation at the federal level and the, uh, state, uh, the state water board. And the state revolving funds, uh, come with a match, they pay seventy-five percent of the cost. So, I, I'm trying to find the way to make the timing work for us to be able to use the bond funds on a package of projects that would allow us, if we get state revolving fund money, to use our bond money for the match for that. So, it's, it's a little bit of a game to try to make that work, but the bottom line is, every little bit of it helps. Um, I am looking at this, uh, particular opportunity to request an earmark, the deadline is like midday on Friday, but I'm pretty confident we're going to submit something. I have, I have to say, um, we have a, a, a pretty good working relationship that's developing now, I think, between Mr. Hopkins and Ms. Warburton and myself, we're sharing a lot of information on grant opportunities and trying to see what works best, I think we all are recognizing that this is an economic development and housing issue for us. Um, so we are working on that. We're also considering, you know, kind of hoping that we'll come to this board next month perhaps to do an informational presentation on what we've achieved in recent years with our capital improvements program to talk about, you know, what we have been spending money on.
Do we have a specific, um, project?
That was my next.
At Tanner, that, and a cost?
My, that was my next point, so, um, I've gone through the committee guidelines for what they will and won't allow, and what's competitive for these programs, and thought about the timing, uh, of when we would be spending the money. And I have three alternatives that I'm weighing, two of which have to do with the Amador Water System Treatment Plants. One would be to do the Clearwell Replacement Project at Tanner and the Backwash Improvements at Tanner. Those are two of the three projects that we need to do there. The total project cost for those, we estimate at being, um, nineteen point seven million dollars. But if we got, uh, grant funding that would cover seventy-five percent of it, we would have to come up with a six and a half million dollar, six point six million dollar match. But I think that that's the highest priority perhaps for us to request. An alternative, if we, and I, and I'm thinking we might be able to present these this year as an alternative, uh, for, for, uh, getting less money, uh, but being able to move forward would be to package all of our Amador and Ione Water Treatment Plants together and say what we're asking for is the design money. Because SRF allows you to get design money separately and then come back later to get construction money. Um, I've, I've ruled out one of the Tanner projects and this idea because it is more growth-oriented and State Revolving Fund. and State Revolving Fund really prioritizes current needs and is not favorable to growth projects. So with five of those six projects, the design cost would be about six million dollars. So we would be asking for four and a half and coming up with a million and a half dollar match, which could be our bond issuing.
Why do you need the match? This is an earmark. It should be fully funded, right? There shouldn't be a, a match required on this. Well, I'm talking about our requests.
Well, the, the Senator's, uh, guidance on how to request this, these kinds of earmarks are in eight or nine different programs. The program that, that would be, that our projects would be eligible for are in the State Revolving Fund program. It comes through US EPA. And when it gets, comes through that program, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five cost split unless you can qualify for a grant or principal forgiveness loan, uh, which we would certainly be looking at the possibility of doing that. But I'm making the assumption at this point that we would have to come up with the match money, which is why I'd like to be able to structure it so that we can use our revenue bond money as the match.
So there's no other program that, that he's offering through his office similar to the, uh, fire station that we're going to build up to hell that was fully funded?
Well, the, um, the program that I saw that our treatment plant projects would be eligible for is under the Subcommittee on Interior, Environment and Related Agencies. And the EPA funding that goes to the State Revolving Fund is what feeds that. I, I did note that there's another one of the programs that he can earmark funds for, which is in the Subcommittee on Agriculture, Rural Development, Food and Drug Administration and Related Grants. They have a Rural Development Community Facilities Grant. And I think that a project that could fit for us there is our Tank D Replacement Project, which is not in the Amador Water System. It's not one of our treatment projects, but it is in our five-year CIP as a priority. And it serves the COP system. And with our population served by that system, we could qualify for a fifty-five percent grant for that and, you know, cut our project in half. Uh, so I'm thinking, those are the three that I'm thinking about. Either we're going for design costs, picking one of the treatment plant projects out and submitting all of the money for that project for construction, uh, or either in addition to those or in the alternative in a completely different committee, looking at the, an agricultural area grant program for the Tank D project. So.
I would think that going for the Tanner improvements and then asking for that forgiveness would be the way to go.
The other point that I really wanted to be here to make today is I have no idea how optimistic we can be that we would get money earmarked by the Senator this time. But I've never been in this game before, the earmarking game. I've done a lot of grants work in the past and I know people have gotten earmarks. But I want to get in the game. I want to get something on paper, be on record. And if they don't do it this year, I want to be there in plenty of time next year to reiterate the request. And that's what I would encourage the county to do as well.
You know, I've got another question too, um, backing up a little bit. We're looking to base, basically request for a grant for AWA and maybe for your treatment plants. But would it behoove the, the county to maybe have that, say that's our number one priority? But maybe have a second priority, maybe pick up, pick a road. I'm thinking like maybe Fiddletown Road because it's got a nexus going the forest. Say that's a second priority because maybe, maybe the Senator or whoever may, may say, I, I don't want to fund a water treatment plant for whatever reason, but yeah, I'll do a road. And then we, we got another project that might, might fly.
Well, there's, there are a lot of programs that are in the Senator's solicitation that are probably programs that the county could apply for and be eligible for that have nothing to do with us. So sure, I think your staff should be looking at all those opportunities as well. And, uh, we can be mutually supportive wherever we can be.
Yeah, and that's kind, that's kind of directed to you, to you, but also the staff and the board, it's just a thought I had. I mean, it's, I, I think I'd say, hey, this is our highest priority. I'm fine with that. But Kate, for some reason, like there's another program or maybe the Senator doesn't like it. He may, it may give us another shot at that apple.
Well, um, I just, Karen, how much, what's your bandwidth, given the time? I mean, can we work on water projects, road projects and everything else?
I, I
Maybe, maybe for next round, Brian?
That's kind of how I feel like if we had a little bit more time in the turnaround for the deadline, I feel like we could definitely include multiple projects. Um, that I see multiple projects, when you look at the list of projects that have been funded, um, this last year and the year before, you can see a lot of places that they're the same, they applied for multiple projects and they got money.
You don't think there's enough time to get a couple in then?
I can try.
Well, when you mention the caveat here, no, I don't. Uh, the caveat is having a, a, a price to that. So how are you going to get a price for a road in three days? Yeah, yeah. It's good, no.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can, we can have
Water Agency has some projects that are specific that they've, they've costed out. So I think that's the best alternative right now this year.
I agree with that.
Strategically.
Try to do it well.
Yes.
Get in the water.
Exactly. I don't want to just throw something against the wall and have that come back to bite you.
I like the idea of going with Tanner because we are at a point where we absolutely need it done. Otherwise we're, we're done for any kind of future growths.
So if the board's acceptable to move this along, I would just have Karen work with Larry to get that, that going.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Hey.
Just remember this, the next time you guys want something.
Well, no, we got a project in Ridge, Ridge Road, and it came down real sudden and it flew. And it, it was kind of But anyway, if the board doesn't want to go that way, okay.
I would say the cost probably does need to be pretty accurate with this scenario. Um, it's not something you can really, you know, do a wag for.
Yeah, I mean.
And that road stuff is so tough. We got one project, they're saying a stop sign. And across walk is six point eight million and down the road there want to put just a stop sign. That is ten million dollars. What? This is the estimate.
Okay.
That work?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Rich.
Any, any last questions?
Now just remember us when we come back to you and ask for some help.
Yeah.
All right. I hear that. I think we're on the same team to benefit the county. So, but, um, I think we need to encourage our staffs to meet and talk about problems when they come up and just don't fire emails.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, just, I mean, it's not, not so much that, but also it's kind of, um, give your staff a little encouragement to think about how they, how they treat the county sometimes. That would be appreciated.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those zoomers, no members of the public want to speak on this matter? Uh, moving on, item five I. This is General Services Administration, discussion of possible action relative to the state mandated migration of Microsoft three sixty-five.
Just a quick clarification, the, uh, I, I tweaked the title a little bit on this. And, uh, what the state mandate is not that we go with Microsoft, but that we have the doc of, uh, emails. And in order to do that fiscally, prudently, we need to do this. So it's a result of a, uh,
Good afternoon supervisors.
Good afternoon.
So this agenda item is for the migration or the discussion thereof for the migration from Google to Microsoft. We've been on Google since two thousand nine. I won't repeat all the memo there, but I'll hit the highlight that, uh, it's been a great product for us. And, uh, I think staff really like it and it's done the job that we need it to do. And the states made changes over the last, I'd say, probably six years where they've really adopted Microsoft three six five. And as the Microsoft products grown, so has their use of that product where it's really integrated into a lot of their business practices. And so goes the state has an impact on the counties. So there's many different state agencies that work with county agencies. And as they share and set up those resources and share some of that information, it's done through the Microsoft three six five environment. What that's translating to really is that we have a lot of staff here at the county that are needing to use Microsoft three six five to do their job most efficiently. And they're using Google and Microsoft, uh, both platforms, which is kind of creating some inefficiencies, some challenges for them. And if we move to the licensed side of Microsoft, it really makes no sense to maintain both environments.
But what is the, you know, the capabilities, you know? Because I've come from the Forest Service, which was, uh, total Microsoft system. And everything's locked down, you know? I can't view my email from home or any other system. So is that, is that the, what we require, you know, as far as security or how does that work?
It's very flexible on how it's configured. The Forest Service may have had it locked down where you couldn't access email from home or from your mobile devices. And, uh, that would not be the case here. I don't see that there, that, that restriction is being placed on local governments. The way I would see that is the Microsoft environment would work very similar to how the Google environment is now. So you have your mail in your pocket and your calendar in your pocket. That would continue. You have it at home and accessible to you on the go and that would continue as well. There's some caveats to that if it's protected data classes, HIPAA data, uh, the CGIS data and that sort of thing. And so there are mechanisms in place to protect that data specifically.
And their OneDrive, would that be the, the platform that we, we'd be using?
OneDrive and SharePoint, both are part of that package. And when we really start getting into just how those work, uh, that's what the professional services aspect is, is for, to really help us evaluate how we use our current products now and which one of those and how it'd be configured to best meet the county's needs.
So, uh, when are we going to roll this out, Jeff?
I, I think I heard a mention of bandwidth in the last agenda item. So, uh, yeah, bandwidth is tight. And so you know how we roll here. We do the best we can with the resources that are provided to us and we understand the financial constraints. I do feel that it's absolutely critical though that we do have professional support services to help us with this. Uh, wearing so many hats, we need someone who lives in that environment. They live and breathe in that environment and can guide us through that configuration.
Are we going to be dual platform for a little bit is what your thoughts are or?
That is correct. Dual platform for a little bit. Uh, the, the Google licenses, uh, will remain intact. And as we build out the Microsoft environment, uh, we'll need to maintain Google intact because all of our mail still routes through Google. Because we can't split if we have Supervisor Brown in the Google environment and Hopkins in the Microsoft environment, but people are emailing to you, where's that mail going to go? So it's going to hit one environment or the other and it's going to route accordingly from that primary.
Like a three-day weekend and said, okay, all mails being transferred to this weekend, don't do anything.
I wouldn't recommend a cut over to that extent without, uh, without pulling in a lot more resources to make that happen. And that certainly can be an option, uh, and it would come with additional funds.
Not really an option here, is there?
No.
No. No, the states, the state has set that, that, uh, that tone for everybody, so.
Is it going to be, I didn't see, is it going to save any money or cost more long-term?
Long-term? We're forecasting what changes Microsoft will make and what changes we're going to have in our business environment here in the county too, which is really difficult to do when we really look out long-term. But if we take today's business use and take that snapshot, we should save funding in the long run. We should save money in the long run, not a great deal. Uh, so the decision isn't really driven by a cost savings. Uh, the, the savings comes from primarily you have right now on all county computers. You have a Microsoft, um, operating system license on your computer. You have Microsoft Office license on your desktop. And then you have a Microsoft, what's called a CAL or a Client Access License that allows you to log into the network. All three of those licenses are covered under what the new license structure would be, which is your one online license. Okay, there's other savings that come into play because right now staff have a desktop and a laptop. They have to have both of those devices licensed from a device standpoint. And under the new license model, the person is licensed, not the computer. So the computer's covered based on that licensed person using it. And a person can have up to five computers allocated to them. If you wanted five laptops, you could, you could have five laptops.
It looks kind of like, um, it's just housekeeping, I guess. So, um, any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none? Looks like we're looking for a motion.
I would move the recommendation.
Second. Motion by Forester, I think, second by Axe. Well, you guys can arm wrestle who gets it. Okay, it's Axe. Motion by Forester, second by Axe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Carrie's unanimous. Thank you.
With hesitation.
Thank you supervisors.
Oh, we got Well, we got minutes. Review and possible approval of the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four, for supervising meeting minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Axe, second by Cruz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Carrie's unanimous. Oh, our next meeting, uh, where the heck did that go? I know, I want to give them the date though. Next meeting will be Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. Um, the board's going to go back into closed session now. Thank you.